Quality product, okay? I think my 21-plus years have shown all the people in this room that I have not built anything that is not satisfactory to the quality of what Washington expects.
Kurt, what are you, what exactly is the plan?
The plan is...
Because that's what I want to...
The plan is, the city wants a road through there, okay? So I'm going to build R1 against Northcrest. The next piece is R2 Villas, very similar to what's behind the lake.
Does the pointer work, Sal?
There we go.
That's what, I just want to click by what exactly you're proposing to do because...
This is the first piece of land right here. This piece of land.
It's the circle button at the bottom.
Right there, this will be R2 duplexes, just like what's behind the lake at Stonecrest, which is right along Rabbit Trail Drive. Right now, the folks that are in here, living in duplexes, and what's in behind the lake at Lake Washington, okay? That buffers...
That type of duplex?
That's exactly right. They'll have brick, they'll have brick and stone fronts. Actually, Sal and I talked about that. Explain to me, Sal. We were looking at doing single-family, was that R1D? You can do zero lot lines, it's the same thing.
Oh, R1C.
But, but the reason we did R2 at this point is because the topography of the land, the grading, none of that's been planned, so to try to pinpoint exactly where the building's going to go is pretty tough at this point.
Is there a plan for like what the target market or the price point is for what you're looking to build there?
Yeah, those, those price points will be, I think right now, those villas' price points are around 300,000 for a half of a duplex or, you know, villa. That's the price point. So, um, so then we move into this area, okay? Townhomes have always been what Kurt Understall envisioned for this area along the park, okay?
What do you mean by that?
Townhomes can be fourplexes, sixplexes, eightplexes. I'm not going to build no 24plex or, or 32plex. That's not, that's not our intent. Our intent is to have nice multifamily for those people who want to have a place at the lake, but want to still live in Washington, want to live in a nice apartment, they want to have a little yard, that's, that's what that's about, okay? Let me tell you another thing that R3 zoning is required for this tract. I've had a guy approach me who has built homes that are assisted living homes, okay? Right next to that firehouse would make an ideal home that people who can't, no longer take care of themselves, they call them day sitters, they take them there, they sit there, okay? That's, that's allowed use in an R3 zoning district, okay? So, 151 acres of land over 21 years and to provide everybody living space, I don't think is, is out of line here. In fact, I've had people come to me and say, Kurt, when you proposed R1, R2 behind the lake, I thought that was crazy. They said, not only was it good zoning, five years later, my grandma, or my, my mother-in-law's living there while I live in Stonecrest. So it allows multiple family functioning. So again, Kurt Understall doesn't build subdivision. Kurt Understall builds developments, builds communities. That's what I build. I can build communities.
So Kurt, when you talk about the, the fourplexes or the sixplexes or whatever, are those, are you talking about those are going to be owned units? Are those going to be rentals that you manage?
They'll be, they'll be, they'll be rentals or they'll be owned, they'll be owned, either way.
Is there another example of those in town that come to mind of a, that you're talking about building there? Is it, is there another example that you can think of?
Well, I'll tell you another example where there's multifamily that everybody here, obviously if they were so upset, Hozzie Acres is fourplexes. When you come in Rabbit Trail Drive, everybody that drives in and parks in their duplex drives past fourplexes and sixplexes, okay? There's a prime example. Hozzie Acres has been there, what, 25 years? Another great, great example, East Fifth Street, right before you get to Packy's, there on the left, those buildings that are right there, I believe those are sixplexes. Mark helped me out there. Alan built those as well, were those, were those six, sixplexes? And, and Cy Albers, God rest his soul, Cy owned those, I think he was the second owner. And Cy told me, he said, you know, I, I could raise the rent on those people, but they're such great renters. And some of those people lived there 22 years. Cy rented to them. So, again, I understand the fear when you get a letter in the mail on city letterhead and you're saying, what the heck is going on? So I, I, it's the American way, the right to free speech, I understand why they're here. But I just want to clarify one thing. You got to look at who's building what, okay? And you got to look at a track record. And, and, and lastly, what I've, I want to educate the public is, single family does not mean, single family is going to be built in Stonecrest. Single family, that ground could be sold to McBride and they could build what they're built in town here. It doesn't have to be, there's nothing in the zoning code that says, single family has to be this level. So again, I'm trying to do what I think's right for the property, what makes the most sense between what's zoned around me and the, the history of that property. And again, been at this a long time, and I'm just wanting to finish it out.
So Kurt, going back to, you said you were talking about maybe fourplex, sixplex, eightplex. About how many of those buildings are you proposing to then?
I think, I think we're only looking at about three or four of those, those bigger ones. Most of these are going to be smaller ones.
So wait, okay.
For senior housing, we're looking at, we're looking, one builder, builder wants to build smaller, all, and, and the other thing too is, I brush all that property, so they're welcome to walk it, but out of 151 acres of land, the topography at Stonecrest was challenging to say the least. And in fact, that farm, the guy that I bought it from, one of the local farmers said, you know, he wasn't a farmer, he was a miner, because he just took from the land. And the erosion and the ditches that were on there, and the amount of earthwork we moved to level that land, but we, what we always do too is, we don't mess with the topography of the land, we work with the land, okay? On a, on a residential development. Obviously, commercial, you have to level ground, so what the developer did to the north is, is common. But this land lays nice and flat, and it lays and rolls down in the creek. So again, single family, multifamily, or duplex property and then multifamily, where people can walk in at grade and have a nice place to live, I don't, I don't see this is going to hurt anybody's property values.
How are you, how are you going to handle the water? Water, the additional buildings?
Actually, Tom, we handled that in 1998. When we built Stonecrest Lake, that's a nine-acre lake, and all the hydraulic runoff is, it's actually larger than it's needed. Just kind of ended up that way. But the height, the, Stonecrest Lake actually stores more water than is required, so yeah, we're good there. In fact, short little side story while we're on the history wagon. May 7th, 2000, it started raining. I went to bed, I was in a subdivision party off of West Ridge Drive. Eight o'clock that morning on a Sunday, my neighbor called up asking if he could borrow a trash pump, pump out his grandpa's garage down on Starterman and 100, 47. I said, why are we doing that? He said, haven't you watched the news? Union's on fire, we've had 13 inches of rain. Stonecrest Lake had one foot of water in it. We finished it December 28th, 1999. May 7th, the water was going out a seven-foot pipe, a foot and a half deep. It stayed in the lake, but hydrologists have said that if Stonecrest Lake would have been full, South Point, South Point School would have probably had three foot of water in it. So the amount of water that was saved by that lake being empty, just happened to be a, right, the lake was at the right place at the right time. But that lake filled in one night. And of course, I shot up and ran out there because I thought my lake would have been gone. But it, it filled it up in one night.
Kurt, do you know any of, any of those apartment buildings? Are they going to be one-story, two-story?
Uh, I think the ones that we're looking at, over here on the side, are two stories to the front, three to the back. And again, Sal, can you flip to the topography? You've got that road on the topography, don't you, on an aerial? Yeah. You see right there, I wish we would have had that to scale, but if you see, John, the distance from the buffer of trees behind Ra, behind Rabbit Trail Drive and the curve in that road, that's a long ways cross there. In fact, we used to grow pumpkins down in there, and that was a, I think a six-acre field down in that flat bottom, so...
So you mentioned before that some of this is going to be senior housing. Is the rest of it though, is, I mean, what is the target market?
Well, the target market is, is, you know, when you start, when you start trying to restrict people to say, well, you can live here and you can't live here, I think City of Washington learned their lesson there, that, that's pretty hard to do. So, you know, it's not my goal. My goal is to build a quality product and let the market take care of itself. You know, nobody, nobody's over there questioning what's going on on Rabbit Trail Drive, and in fact, you know, if there was a fire, God forbid, or a tornado and wiped out everything on Rabbit Trail Drive, the zoning allows them to all go back as apartments. So, you know, who's to say what's going to happen in the future?
So, I mean, are you, you mentioned that there was someone else that was maybe going to build the senior housing. Are you going to be building the other buildings?
No, the, the gentleman, the gentleman that built down off of Ninth Street, next to the daycare, have you seen that nice building he built? He's looking for another spot to put another assisted living, date, what they call adult daycare. And again, right next to the city park, right next to the firehouse, to me, that's a, that's a prime spot for something like that.
Okay.
And that looks, that looks like a $500,000 home. I think that guy had 1.2 million in that building, so.
When...
And I'm not saying, I'm not, you know, I don't want to lead you on, I, I got that soul in him, but he, there's, there's an example that you have to have R3 zoning to build something like that.
Right.
Okay?
So you mentioned that some of these though, you're, you intend to build and manage, is that, did I understand that correctly, or?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make sure that the building is done correctly.
Okay.
I develop the land and sell off the land.
Okay. So you, I mean, can you really say like what would be the average rent? I mean, are you talking about like size of these apartments or anything?
They'll be, they'll be all high-end, they'll be all high-end. There won't be no starter apartments, let's say that.
Okay.
They're going to be more like what you got down there, Our Lady Lourdes. I mean, what's, what are they getting down there?
You, you don't know the square footage approximately, you think, on those units?
Two-bedroom, two-bedroom, two-bath, 800 square feet, I guess, I don't know. But again, you know, I think we're kind of getting the cart in front of the horse. What we got to look at is, what's this land best use? To transition from heavy commercial to single family? And where have we done this in Washington? We've done this several places, and it was done, not as much buffering as I'm doing. There, you know, if, if this was in St. Louis and Baldwin, they would slaughter all those trees down next to Rabbit Trail Drive and, and pipe that creek, pay the Corps of Engineers to pipe that, and build right up to the line. I have no intention of doing that.
Are you kind of envisioning...
And I'll, and I'll put that in writing, I, I'm going to leave that buffer.
Are you envisioning something kind of like, because I, like the Carriage Courts condos that are right by Quail Run?
Uh, I'm not familiar with that development, but, uh...
Okay, on 14th?
Yeah. I think those are senior units.
They're not senior units.
They're not senior?
No.
I know Tom Dill used to live there, maybe still lives...
He is senior, but...
He is senior. That's my baseball coach, but, uh, but no, I, I, you know, again, there's, well, there's a good example. There's a good example of, of a apartment building. Again, the word apartment can be townhomes, and it could be lofts, there's a lot of different terminology that people like to throw out when they use the word apartments. And I just want to be clear that you have to make sure that who's going to do what, okay? And again, I think my track record of 21 years speaks for itself. Why would I, why would I do anything here to harm the value of what I've built, or do anything here to take away from anybody else's property? But I've owned this land since 1999, long before probably anybody in this room was even living around here. And I had to develop the ground backwards, and we made it work.
Hey Kurt, on that continuous buffer that goes all the way, I mean, parallel with Rabbit Trail...
Mm-hmm.
What is the minimum width on that? Probably about 50 feet at least, huh?
That, that little sliver, I think Mark is 21 or 22 feet deep. Because again, the history of why that little sliver was out there, Mark wanted, for the annexation of Eli Farm to be legal, it had to be 20, it'd be 1,500 feet along the property that touched Lake Washington. And at the time, DeJohn's farm was still in the country, that wasn't in the city. So if you envision that flag and that little sliver of land, that one around the hog farm, yeah, go to that color map.
So that sliver of land is 25 feet wide?
That, that sliver, I think...
The buffer zone is much wider, maybe 50, 60 feet wide.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That, that chunk of woods is, is a lot wider than that little sliver.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. And that will all stay.
Yep. And I, and I, and I challenge anybody to, to tell me they can see what's in that field right now, because I drove, I drove it Sunday and looked down through there, that's, that's thick. That vegetation is, is a good buffer, and there's no reason to take it down.
So you won't have any apartments like most people associate South Winds as?
No, no.
Just wanted to clarify that.
No.
I know you wouldn't, but...
No. No. In fact, you could go to Hanover, you know, John, we've had, we had a full house, and now those people are very happy. Neighbors are happy.
That's another good example.
And in fact, we're down to, down to one villa lot left, so, again.
How, how are you going to, how do you control, because you said you're going to sell it off, right?
Mm-hmm.
How are you going to control what the developer puts on there then?
You, you did restrict it, put restrictions on it, yeah. Yeah. No, that's, that's a, that's a guarantee. There's no, you know, I had, actually, I don't like to name names, but there was a big St. Louis developer who wanted to just write me a check and buy it out. But he wanted, he wanted total control, and I wouldn't sell it to him. Because I was afraid of what he would do to it, which again, I've got 20 years of my life on this side of the road. So I almost feel like I got to finish it out and get it zoned right and do it right. And again, that flat bottom down there isn't, is not conducive to single family down in there. It's just the way the topography of the land, it, it wouldn't be, wouldn't be a good layout.
Any other questions?
Yeah, you brought that up, and I think that's a good point, Kurt, is that it wouldn't be a good layout because the lots would have to be too big to be buildable? Is that my understanding?
Well, for one, for one, you're in a floodway down there. There's the flood, you know, there's a flood zone and then the floodway, there's a, the, right there where those trees and that, there's a piece that's on the, on the floodway map, so you got to, you got to have to move a lot of dirt to get that up and out, where if you do say a, a fourplex or sixplex and you put it up high, you know, you're good, because you come in on the first floor and then down, so...
Any other questions, comments of Kurt? We may have more later.
Sure will.
Thank you.
All right.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks Kurt.
Anyone else that wants to talk? If you, when you come up, please address the board and not other people in the audience, it's, we'll get the answers to your questions.
My name is Ron Crisco, I'm representing Lake Washington Condo Association, Planning and Zoning Commission. I am here to discuss why you should not rezone Stonecrest Plaid 18 from R1A, single family, to R3 multifamily. The people in both Stonecrest and Lake Washington Estates have spent hard-earned funds to have subdivisions they are proud of. Many of those residents are here tonight, and I believe they are overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly opposed to this change. Property owners are entitled to quiet enjoyment of their property. This change will certainly not continue that enjoyment. Rabbit Trail used to be dead end, and shortly will have three roads with access. The increased traffic and speed have already disrupted our quiet community, but was done in the name of progress. We have, we can live with the single-family homes being built. Now a proposal to change our quality of life even more. We don't want apartments with traffic at all times of the day and night. We don't want the backs of our homes to be lit up all night by the bright lights of the parking lots. We don't want tire noise at night. We don't want the crime and drugs that often come from densely populated complexes. The majority of the people in both Stonecrest and Lake Washington Estates are owners and have skin in the game. This is not true with rentals. Finally, don't use the argument that Lake Washington Estates is zoned R3. Lake Washington Estates was developed many years ago for single families. We have no apartments, it's a moot point. Finally, don't wreck our wonderful neighborhoods and the quality of life of many people for one developer that is not community progress. Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks Ron.
My name is Tom Miller, and I've lived in this beautiful city for almost two and a half years. And I just have a few questions. I'm not sure, on the new land that's going to be developed, you were mentioning earlier, which would be this parcel that's on the bottom of the screen?
Can you...
Is that yet committed to how that's zoned?
No, it's not been annexed. It's not in the city limits.
But we've already had a builder who's bought the land right there?
This?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
Okay. And what is that builder's intention?
I would assume, single family. That's not on the agenda.
I know the builder, it's, it's going to be single family as far as I can read between the lines. So we got single family, single family, single family, and you want to put multifamily in the middle of that single family. Next question is, you talk about fourplexes and sixplexes on Rabbit Trail, can I see those? Where are they located?
They're probably out of view, probably right here.
Okay. And right behind the land is duplexes? Further down?
Yeah.
So really, your buffer you're talking about is commercial to fourplexes or sixplexes? Which doesn't make any sense to have all the way around there, single and duplexes, and then throw multifamily. That's currently zoned what, right now?
R1A.
So there's a contract between the builder back in 1999?
I don't know what you're asking, no.
Is that when that was zoned?
That's when he bought it. When it's annexed in...
When was it zoned, single?
When it was entered in as, when it was annexed.
Yeah, so I guess 99, 2000?
Yeah.
Okay, so everybody who's built and bought in that vicinity was under the impression or under a contract with the city that that was single?
It wasn't a contract with the city.
Well, it's not a contract, but it's a contract.
No.
No, it's not.
It, it comes into the city at a zone. It can change, it could, you know...
Well, anything can change.
Right.
But it's no contract.
No, it's not.
Well, I think that, that we should be consistent. I think everybody here would walk away if you just make those duplexes. I think everybody would be fine with that.
We kind of heard the same thing.
And I think that's a nice transition. We have beautiful duplexes all up and down Stonecrest.
Yep.
Why can't we just keep that?
When those villas went in, there was a lot of people up here not wanting them. They were upset, because it was going to ruin their subdivision.
Well, I don't think they're upset now.
No. It, it turned out well.
That's what I'm saying. Why don't we just continue the pattern?
Well, because he's coming in with a proposal, obviously.
Yeah, because we put something in writing that we're not going to get any more than a fourplex or a sixplex or more than two stories? I mean, is that part of the zoning? So there's no guarantees.
No.
The only guarantee is, if you don't change that to multifamily, that's the only guarantee we have.
Mm-hmm.
Outside of that, there's no guarantee. Contract can be broken because you basically said, there's no such thing as contracts.
Well, not with the city.
No, that's not what you said.
You know what I'm saying, I'm reading between the lines. Dartine Prairie had this problem about 10 years ago. And the community fought it, they hired a lawyer, and the community lost, and the community won, and the city lost. It's a famous case in St. Charles County, and it was a very similar situation. I just think that we ought to keep it nice, single or duplexes. Because we bought in with that condition, and we expect that condition to stay. That was part of the contract when we bought the land, or the house. Rest in peace.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Carolyn Sellers, I'm a homeowner on Windcrest.
I'm sorry, what was that?
On where?
Windcrest, which is adjacent.
Yeah.
I'd just like to say, with all due respect to the developer, that if his intent was to build apartment complexes, when he started this, he should have zoned it that way originally. Now, he didn't, and the homeowners, the voters of Stonecrest, all purchased thinking we'd be living in a single-family development. There is, just to turn it around with completely vague, it could be anything. We'll have a senior center, I've heard apartments, eightplexes, you know, duplexes, you have no idea. And you're going to take a vote and change the face of our neighborhood without any idea what you're putting us, or going to turn our neighborhood into. It just seems like if he had a plan, you would see it. You would see what he is going to do with that property, and you're about to change our neighborhood without knowing that. I think you should take the consideration of the taxpayers and the voters of Stonecrest into consideration when you make this decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening. My name's Jim Dodson. I'm a resident of Stonecrest, live on Earthcrest Drive. I've got a question that's a little bit of a tangent, I guess, and you tell me if it's off limits. We went to a meeting over there by the tennis courts about six weeks ago about the new firehouse. I have not heard anything about that since. Is that issue, as far as that negotiation, resolved or not?
No, that is still moving forward.
Moving forward, meaning there's progress being made?
There's progress. The city has not purchased a lot, but it's still under negotiation.
Okay. And, and I guess the question I've got, and maybe the question is for the developer, is the senior housing, would that go adjacent to the proposed firehouse location?
That's what he said. We, we'll get the answer to that, but that's what he said initially, it'd be next to it.
Okay, that's all I got, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Good evening all. Gwen Montal, 2786, Earthcrest Drive. Thanks for all your good questions tonight, and thanks Kurt for the development you've done so far in Washington. It is hard for all of us who currently live there, understanding that we are in an R1A residential area, to be talking about promises tonight and not have anything to look at to decide about, right? So, my heart goes out to you, and my heart goes out to all the residents who want quality. One small point I have to add to the discussion is, I've heard connecting Northcrest and Earthcrest over to Rabbit Trail is, the point is to relieve congestion at Rabbit Trail and 100, and yes, that needs to be done. But if you zone this area, R3, you're just adding more traffic, and it's going to make the Earthcrest, Northcrest, 100, Vernace Drive, crazy too. So I just think, keep that in, keep that in mind as we're talking about making this a... a more dense development. Are we really relieving traffic? Are we really achieving the goal of relieving the congestion? And we're just going to add more at 100 and Bernice? So, thank you, all.
I have a question for you that you would know the answer to.
Maybe.
Yes, well, you will. You lived in Quail Run previously, correct? Because you know, because I live there too.
Yeah.
And Quail Run is right by the Carriage Courts, and that has four units, six units, eight unit things. Did being next to Carriage Courts in any manner harm your property value in Quail Run?
I think it did. I mean, it just, the residents there, I've, I heard it said tonight, they weren't owners. So, they didn't care for the property the same way that the property owners in Quail Run cared for their properties. So, we lived across the street. I think the people who backed up to it were more affected to it, or by it than that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Tim Montal, 2786. And the other half can talk as well. We, we lived in Quail Run, like Gwen said, and we saw Carriage Courts, which were much nicer, and that's what's being talked about of putting here. But on, right on the other side, that's the version of apartments. We walked our dogs all the time down Blue Jay Drive. And South Winds, or whatever that is, that is a horrendous area as far as people renting, no ownership of anything in the neighborhood. When we moved from Quail Run to Stonecrest, we, like everybody else, it was all zoned R1. And that's the assumption that we had. There was no contract. That is true. There's no contract unless you own the property. But we didn't, but we were under the assumption that it was all R1. And I would also second the idea of zoning at R2. I like the buffer of R1, and R2 makes complete sense to me because the R2s that are in Stonecrest are fantastic. So, anyway, not anything a whole lot new, but again, we don't have any, by zoning at R3, we lose control. We don't have any control of it. The only thing we have is the zone. And unless there's something in writing or a contract for square footage or something like that for building structures, I, I'd like to just preferably stay R1, but I think most people would agree that R2, the way it's built in Stonecrest, would be agreeable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Cumley, 2338, English Crest Drive. I, I have a question, and this may be a Kirk question. Are you referring to that as Stonecrest Platt something or another? The, the part in yellow there?
Yeah, Platt 18.
So, is it affiliated with Stonecrest subdivision, or is it not? So, will these people pay assessments to Stonecrest Subdivision Homeowners Association?
Wait, we'll, yeah, we'll get the answers to it.
Well, the reason why I ask that, it's very important to know, because if you zone that, and it is part of Stonecrest Homeowners Association, we're possibly introducing 100, 150, 200, 300 people that come to our lake, use all the common grounds. I mean, this just hit me. So, now you've taken a small group of individuals, and it may not be, this may be a mute point, but I think it's very important to know, I didn't, I did not think that this was part of Stonecrest the whole time. I thought this was an individually owned piece of property, and there was a division there, and it had nothing to do with Stonecrest subdivision until somebody said that earlier. But if it does, then there's going to be more assessments, more people, the common ground is used by, I don't know, however many apartments we build. And I, I don't think anyone even thought that far ahead of that. So, now, instead of you having your private swimming pool, there's 50 people using your private swimming pool. If, and I think you understand where I'm going there.
But it's a lake.
Huh?
But it's a lake.
Yeah, but it's a lake. But you know what I'm saying there?
Yes.
And it may be a mute point, but I think that's something we need to check into and address and think about that maybe hasn't been thought about yet.
All right.
That's a good question, I think.
Yep, great. Any other questions, comments, but anyone in the audience?
Hi, I'm Charlotte Tyree, 2508, Andrea Crest Drive. And my concern is the buffer zone. I walk what I call the target trail, but come fall, all those leaves fall off of the trees, and you can see all of the condos on Rabbit Trail. So, I really feel that, yes, there's trees there, but probably for four to six months, there's not going to be much privacy for those people on Rabbit Trail if you have apartments that have lights and noise, because I can see right through the trees when I'm walking that trail. So, I don't think too much about that, you know, the buffer zone's going to provide a lot of the privacy. So, that was my comment. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Jim Beckel. I live on Earthcrest. And I trust Kurt's going to do a good job from what you said. But I think there's some questions out there.
Yeah, if you could adjust.
There's some questions we need to have answered. R3, what does R3, what's the largest unit that can be made with R3?
We don't have unit sizes. We have density requirements, so it's 2000.
Okay, well, what's, when I pull up R3 on the Washington code, it says that no larger than a four-family dwelling shall be constructed.
No, that's, I, I think it's, once you get over 4,000, four units, you have to have 2,000 square feet per unit in the lot.
Well, what does that mean, then?
The density is, yeah, thank you, Mike. The density is for 2,000 square foot per unit. And that's not the building, that's the lot.
Right, but, but we're talking about construction. No more than four families in a dwelling shall be constructed. That would be a quadruplex, right?
It's got to be a.
So, that's, the max is a quadruplex.
Well, if the, if you, depending on your acreage.
Well, it doesn't give that.
I think it's 2,000. Here. I think it's 2,000 per four fami, for a four-family.
But, but one structure can only have four families.
No, not, not in R3. If you had, if you had a large lot, you could have a bigger complex.
Well, then, why do you say four-family dwellings shall be, no larger than a four-family dwelling shall be constructed?
And right now, I wish our attorney was here, because he could tell you verbatim. We can get that answer.
Looking at item seven.
It's where a lot of record on the date of the passage of the ordinance, so it's prior to 1988.
So, that is, it says whenever there's a lot that has less area or width than required in zoning divestment. So, this was a lot that's too small, it can only have four units. But that is not the case in this scenario.
If you can, come back to the mic.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Mine's the right one.
Okay, okay, gotcha. If there's going to be a rental or apartment there, would that not, an apartment complex, wouldn't that have to be under some kind of management?
Well, somebody's going to rent those, so.
Well, somebody's going to rent them, but they got to have a manager, right?
I mean, it may be a person and not a management company.
Right.
But there'll be somebody that has to answer.
Somebody owns, owns the complex.
Right.
Somebody manages the complex.
Right.
So, that's something you all would look to when you're working with Kurt.
Well, the city would look to them if they have problems with that unit, you know, that build.
But to be determined, you would build an apartment complex, which would have to have a manager.
Correct.
And then that manager, I think this is where the previous question came up, that probably needs to be addressed, and you probably want to work with Kurt on that, is that, would that then be part of Stonecrest, and would that managed apartment unit have to pay into the Stonecrest Association as part of their rental of the apartments?
We can find that out.
To, yeah, to be determined. I'm not giving that. Now, I will point out something that happened with, everybody knows at the entryway, you've got villas, you've got duplexes to Stonecrest. One of the concerns that came up here was about rental other than an apartment complex. In the covenants, Lake Shore Villas at Stonecrest is a association onto itself. Stonecre, they're in Stonecrest, and they do pay to the Stonecrest Owners Association, Property Owners Association. The thing that we did, and Kurt worked with us on this, is in our covenants, we have that you cannot rent a duplex or your side of a duplex. The owner cannot rent it unless they get permission from the association. The idea behind that was, is to keep a, what do you want to call it, a villa association from being taken over by a developer and turn it into a rental property as opposed to a owner-occupied property.
Mm-hmm.
And I would assume that anything that happens at the other end, that something like that could be put in the covenants. It's also in the covenants of Stonecrest that individual, single-family homes cannot be rented without approval. Well, I don't know if that passed through Stonecrest 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, but it was in 1, 2, 3.
Yeah.
But once Stonecrest would become an association, the association could make sure that's incorporated into the covenants, just as an FYI.
Mm-hmm.
But I would hope, and this is where Kurt, you could, could definitely help us, is in the covenants that he's going to put for these duplexes or whatever is going to go in this rezoned area, lot, that those covenants could have that there's going to be an association. I think that's a state statute, you have to have an association. And that in those covenants, you would have the board and/or the association itself would have to approve rentals.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the wording's in the existing covenants, and it could easily be put in any new covenants.
Correct.
You could take it right out. That's something just to look at.
Mm-hmm.
But I get it now. I, I would say it's a little confusing on your quadruplex, sixplex. But I do understand what you're doing.
That was put in the code, just so you know, so if there's a piece of property that didn't meet those capacity requirements that we have now, and if it existed for 88, they were assured a minimum of four.
Okay, so it was in the other way. Okay, I got you. All right. Enough said, but I wanted to get the FYIs out and hope that, like I said, I think Kurt will do a good job. I hope he gets it done before something happens to him and one of these unscrupulous developers take over.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak? I will say, come on up. Yep.
I'm not usually the talker. Kurt does all the talking, and he's way smarter than me and knows all the numbers. Okay. But I don't think that anybody.
Will you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, Michelle Understall. I'm sorry, Michelle Understall. We do appreciate everybody coming here to say their piece. I think when everybody leaves a meeting like this, they get a lot more information. It makes them feel better about what's going on, just like the firehouse meetings, everybody was worked up about it, but I could see everybody's peace of mind after those meetings were over. But I don't think anybody that was in phase one ever even thought what might go on the other end of this farm in 20 years. And when we built phase two, people in phase one didn't like it. When we built phase three, people in phase two didn't like it. When we built below the lake where Charlotte Tyree lives, they didn't like that either. That wasn't a single family. Didn't like that either. So, we're wanting to connect R3 to R3. I don't think that's uncommon in town. And if people read their restrictions, we did add this to our restrictions early in the development, and it's, it's just something that we just wanted to let people know. So, when you said that you, if they bought a house and they had no idea that it wasn't always going to be R1, we just, in our, in our restrictions, we just say, "All owners of lots in subdivision hereby understand that undeveloped lands adjacent to said subdivision may be developed for residential use, and do hereby agree not to object or interfere with such future development of rezoning of undeveloped land owned or controlled or future owned or controlled by the developer so long as said future development complies with applicable city regulations and laws." So, if they look at their restrictions, they see this, it just says that, hey, phase four, five, six, seven, eight years from now, we, we can't tell you what's going to happen. We can't tell you that we're going to do R1 all the way to the very last, you know, six inches of property. We can't tell you that. We couldn't tell you 20 years ago. But we put in restrictions just to say, we're just letting you know that it could happen, something might happen. But like Kurt said, you know, when this, the guy that just talked just now and said, "I hope Kurt lives long enough before an unscrupulous developer comes in." Kurt has shown the city that, I mean, this is, this is, that song, "This is my town", that's how Kurt Understall feels, okay? His name is on Stonecrest. His name is on Hanover. His name is on Fairfield. His name is on the Highlands. I mean, he does a great job, and he's proud of Washington, and he's proud of what he does. And I, I hope the people that live in Stonecrest just know that he's going to do a good job, whether it's R1 or R2 or R3. So, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Anyone else? I was going to say, as far as the lights, that's kind of, lights have to stay on your property. They cannot flood over to another property.
If a light is directed towards neighboring property regardless of the zone, this, by zoning law, we can require them to be directed back and.
Yeah, and I, and I wanted to, that's the reason I'm back here, I wanted to address some of those comments, and you stole my thunder, Tom. Charlotte, you're probably, you're worried about leaves off trees. Again, the, the amount of light in the summertime when there's tennis courts playing, okay? Think about the people that are in a single-family home that have the lights of the tennis court coming out. Now, I will say one thing, I think the Parks Department, Darren, has done an excellent job of getting downlighting in that, in that tennis court. But I'll, you, you know, when there's playing tennis at the back of Phoenix Center, when there's a tennis league, I mean, that whole sky's lit up. And again, it, yeah, it's a park, Carolyn, but it's, it's an intrusive park. Also, that won't happen on those apartment buildings. The nice thing that, with LED lighting and what they call downlighting, I have had that on my own property where I live, the developer, in fact, he happens to just be sitting in the audience, probably here for something else, but he was nice enough to dial the intensity of the lights down, because it was overshadowing into the neighborhood. But the nice thing, they do make downlighting now, so any buildings that get built back there, the light will stay on there. The parking lot lighting won't cast out, but that's old technology. John Feldman had Modernato, and I didn't even have one thing built on the Jasper Farm. And when Modernato got built, those lights lit up, and I mean, it flooded that farm. And I told him, I said, "That, that is unacceptable, just what you said. You've got to keep your light on your land." And they fixed them. They got the, they got the lights, when you drive by Modernato now, it only lights up the cars on the lot, and that light doesn't scatter. So, that's something that, you know, I would encourage this zoning board to, to, to really keep making sure that that, that happens. Because that's, that's good development. That's good, being a good neighbor. So, I won't, I won't make, I'll make sure that that doesn't happen. There's no scattered light going across the creek through the trees. Yeah, can you, can you look down through, through a tree with no leaves on it and see light? Yeah, you'll see light, but you won't have that glaring, blowing light that a lot of people are concerned in past developments. And again, you know, with that being said. And again, you know, with that being said, I can't stop what happened to the north. I owned that land long before the guy to the north of me owned it. He bought a hog farm, turned it into a shopping center. I think all the folks in Stonecrest and Rabbit Trail Drive shop there. They're convenient. I'm sure when the Aldi store gets open, they're, they're going to really have a great store right there. But that light cast towards the development, and again, we're trying to buffer that. We're trying to buffer all that. So the other thing was talked about was restrictions. Tracy, I appreciate your comment. Stonecrest Homeowners Association will have some authority as far as what was going on in there, but we're not going to get into weeds and have intermixing of the developments. Basically where this R1 stops is Stonecrest and this development would have its own rules, regulations to, to, at the same level that Stonecrest has, but we don't have to sit there and worry about people coming in from the apartments and fishing in the lake. That, that was never my intent. So that, that would be rectified. And then you, somebody had asked about what, you know, who, who's going to live here, you know, you're concerned about who's living here. If I had one phone call, Samantha, I've had 10 phone calls from these traveling nurses and doctors asking if they could rent a house in Stonecrest. They wanted to buy a house in Stonecrest just to be able to work at Mercy. And again, I said, well, you know, that's really not the place for it. Because it only takes one doctor not cutting his grass or one nurse not cutting their grass, then I gotta, you know, I got people upset. So we just told them, no, here's a perfect place for that, okay? Build a nice eightplex, doctor can have an apartment, he can work two days a week at Mercy and it's all maintained and taken care of. So that's why we're not, that's another, another tenant, a need, again, I don't build subdivisions, I build communities. Had a lot of young executives traveling to St. Louis and living in St. Louis apartments because they don't have a nice apartment here to live in. Okay? So we're going to address that need. We're going to have a nice apartment complex. It's going to have a fitness center, its own swimming pool. So those are the amenities that we're looking at that will be shared by the senior housing, the villas and the six and eightplexes. The one guy talked about building pickleball courts. I, I'm not a pickleball court guy, but supposedly that's the rage right now. And I said, well, can't you play pickleball in a tennis court? You've got six tennis courts right across the road.
They are pickleball courts too. They are pickleball.
Are they? Are they? I, I, Tom, I'm clueless on pickleball, but anyway, that's what I kind of thought. I thought they could play right across the road.
That's one other discussion there.
So anyway, I just, I just wanted to say that, you know, as far as concerns about light, that would be addressed and there wouldn't be any co-mangling of the developments.
Would you be agreeable to a PDR?
Yeah, that's my question.
Well, you know, here's the thing about a PDR, okay? You can go and come with a PDR, but then you have, then, then you, then you got to try to figure it all out. And I'm, I'm going to tell you something, 2009, I went there, I spent $25,000 of my own money. This board approved it and the city council was going to approve it and a lynch mob showed up and didn't approve it because of a bunch of lies and outright false stuff that was going to be going there, okay? That same development got built across the town and it's a great development. So I'm not going to go down the path of spending a lot of money trying to say, well, this is how it's all going to look. You just have to, at some point, say, that guy knows what he's doing, okay? Because that land can be sold, and again, one thing we got to, I want everybody to get educated about, they're, they're talking single-family. There is nothing in the zoning code that requires a single-family house to be more than 500, 800 square feet. It can be a four-square box, vinyl siding, 412 pitch roof, and it can have a carport. It doesn't have to have a garage. So don't think that single-family is the answer. The answer is to build a quality product that's going to be maintainable for the longevity of the development. And I'll tip my hat to Alan Whitworth. He's done an awesome job, right down there in front of Our Lady of Lourdes Church. I went by there and looked at those buildings and I said, you know what, that's a, that's a first-class example of multifamily in conjunction with single-family, in conjunction with church property. And so, again, I, I don't feel like what I'm asking for is, is out of line. And if you have any more questions, I'd be glad to answer.
What if something happens to you?
That's a good question. What if, what if something would have happened to me, what if something would have happened to me 10 years ago? Yeah, you know what? She, she's going to sell the highest bidder, I'll tell you that right now. I've already had a St. Louis builder that wanted to build Cracker Jacks on that and offered me more money than I'm going to get for what I'm trying to do. But I won't put my name on something like that. Just won't do it. And I understand why the city did what they did down there off A Street. That was a redevelopment. And what it was to what it is now, it's a massive improvement. I'm not, I'm not slamming what got built there. But that won't fly in Stonecrest. And that's what could go in there, okay? That's what could go on the end of Rabbit Trail Drive, you know? Vic and I aren't getting any younger.
I do think there's the highest and best use. If you have a $300,000 villa or duplex, if you rent it out, it's going to cost a lot.
Absolutely.
So.
Exactly right.
I mean.
He's not, you gotta, yeah, we run into this before. The land's worth a lot of money.
And I can tell you, I, I live in Quail Run right next to Carriage Court and I own property in Carriage Court as well and my property values have not been harmed one bit. Not even a little bit. Houses in Quail Run sell immediately for top dollar and they're right next to exactly what, actually, probably not as nice as what you're talking about.
Yeah, and, and you know, again, I, I have, I think, go back on the record, many years I've sat at this podium. What they do in St. Charles County and they do in West County is the gentleman, Mr. Miller, stated, you know, those developers rape the land and they'd have no, no care whatever, other than just making the ultimate dollar for what they have. And when they do, they slaughter every tree, fill in every ditch and try to maximize the lots. And I have made a point to always work with Mother Nature, work with the land, put on the land what the land will, will, will support. And again, leaving buffer. All the folks that live down along Earth Crest, we have all that, all buffered back through there. So, you know, the commercial that's to the north, to the, to the, to the east, that's all buffered to the folks there on the backside of Rabbit, or backside of Stonecrest, so.
I.
Thanks, Kurt.
I was trying to look at both sides of this issue, I guess. If you went R3 to the north of the proposed road, see what I'm saying?
Yep.
So you had a strip of R3 in there?
Yep.
And then when that road curves, if you made the rest of that R2, so you could put your duplexes in there, you could put, I think, your senior housing, I'm not sure of that.
Yeah, actually, the, one of the.
Because I, I don't know what's in your head and I think that's the comment I have. If you're thinking about that north part, because that's where you said you might do some type of, you know, the developer down on Nine Streets looking at doing another home there. You could do a, you could do a apartment building, I'll say that, a sixplex, eightplex, or a couple of them, and I don't know how many you could get along in there.
Right now, right now.
I was just trying to get you something in there and, and nobody seems to be real upset because they've seen what you've done with the duplexes and the senior housing. I think people are okay with that. I think the problem becomes what else could go in there and without a plan. So I was trying to say, okay, use that northern part then for your more dense and use the rest of the property which would be R2.
Well, and, and, and you know, Mike, that's basically what we, what we envision. If, if you look at that, what they call Road A, we were originally going to bring that in as a cul-de-sac on the R2.
Right.
So what we decided is to loop the road back on itself and then, so you may have duplexes in the, in the.
Right.
What color is that? Peach? You might have duplexes in the peach and then as you swing in, you may have a fourplex that's all ground-level access. Trying to think of an example, well, what you got down there at the end is a Rabbit Trail Drive right now. When you drive in Rabbit Trail Drive by Bank of Frank County, those are old-style.
Right.
The hosi stuff. I wouldn't, I mean, no offense, I mean, that's just faded stuff. But again, I don't think anybody in Lake Washington's property values have went down by those fourplexes that are built there behind the cinema. And they're butt, you know, they butt right to the cinema. So that's kind of what, you know, but to answer your earlier question, I wouldn't be opposed to, to coming in with a plan, but I just don't think that, I don't want to go down this path of, I've already got one partner and she's a very attractive apartment, but I don't need 50 more, so tell me how to do my job.
See, I was just trying to get, if that's where you're going to go with your dense was going to be to the north and you were going to do more to the south, why wouldn't we go R2 to the south and R3 to the north? But it sounds like that you're going to have some R3.
Yeah, the, the thing is.
And R2 within the R2.
Yeah, just what they were talking about, what you were saying, the four, the four, it, it really is the city's density area thing. So like if you wanted to put a senior fourplex right there between Clay Camp and that, and that Loop Road, you've got to be R3. You can't, you can't really do that in R2. And, and you know, a good example of another multifamily property that at the time it went in, it got ex-owned and got approved because it was butting some property. People were concerned about it. Help me out there, next to the car wash. Oh, what's that? Willow Twist?
Willow's? Down below down there?
Willow's at the lake, Willow's at the lake. Those are, those are, basically, if you look at those, those are eightplexes, 10plexes, all single-family. Now, those aren't, that, I mean, that guy, a St. Louis guy, but he, that, I told, I did, I did the earthwork on that and I said, man, this is a rough piece of ground to try to, but, you know, the one piece was flat, but the others is up, down, up, down, up, down. And that's, that's not really how you do villa housing, you know, multifamily housing's flat. The nice thing about that piece of land, it lays perfect to put, you know, a sixplex, which will look like what you got there behind Hillerman Nursery, across from Hillerman Nursery, but it all lays flat. See what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
There on Willow, Willow, Willow's on the lake, so. So anyway, that, that's.
Kurt, I know that we don't, we're not talking about the design as much, but would there be garages, single-family or single-car or two-car garages?
Yeah, there, there'll be some garages. In fact, if you go down there and look at those ones that Alan put in there from Our Lady of Lourdes, they have like four garages on one side and four on the other. So yeah, the garage is off, off-street parking will be a, a part of it. Now, again, we're, we're not looking at 28plexes where we got to build this massive chunk of asphalt and have it all lit up. That, that's not what we're looking at. This is going to be landscaped, it's going to fit in. When, when all the trees grow up, it's going to, it's going to blend in nice. There's another good example that I, when Sal and I were first talking about this, it was over at St. Charles. What, remember, I don't know if you can find that, that was a good example. Remember right there by the convention center in St. Charles? An old St. Charles. They did a good job of building in single-family. They abut Highway 70, so again, the developer's trying to figure out, okay, you know, you know, everybody wants single-family, but okay, if I build a single-family, nobody wants to buy it because they don't want to, they don't want to have the lights at Target in their backyard, then what? You see what I'm saying? So that, that has to be looked at as well. So when we talk about transitioning and buffering, there's a reason for all that. But, and I don't know if you can find it or not, but there's a real nice example of, of a townhome apartment building complex right there along the backside of, of St. Charles.
There's the convention center.
It was to the west, remember that, going out that road? Hmm, I should, get it on.
Further, further west, southwest.
Yeah, right in there, I think. Yeah, right there. See, those, those are, those are, those are prime examples of, you know, again, I don't call those apartments, I call those townhomes. But to get to zoning, that's got to be an R3 zoning.
And now, Kurt, would there be the possibility with some of this stuff that you're talking about building, I mean, could this be an owner-occupied type of thing? Like you would sell them as condos potentially?
Yeah, no, that, and, and that's, that's allowed in the zoning code to be owner, owner-sold. I, 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 I struggle with that as well, though. One gentleman asked about management, making sure that it would be managed and maintained. That, that would be my concern is that, again, it only takes one bad apple. And then you've got what Mr. Monal was concerned about on the north side of 14th Street. Though, there's a, there's an example where too many owners, nobody was watching the company store. And then you, you know, well, prime example, Carriage Court, well-maintained.
Right.
Other side, not well-maintained.
Right, because there's an owners' association that's very strict with.
So, so it's how you set it up, how you develop, excuse me, how you set it up, how you develop it to make sure that it's going to be done right. And again, the last thing I want to do is have something done not right on this particular tract of land.
Any other questions, comments, or Kurt?
I have a question and I want to go back a little ways. You came before us some time ago about the apartments you're putting, were being put out between High Street and Pottery, kind of out there where all the land is being moved and everything, and you sold that to us. I had no problem with that, that it was going to have a clubhouse, a pool, upscale, it's going to be great. That was a good spot. The only neighbors involved necessarily were Metal Lake Farms, but they weren't in the city at that time. So that was not, I mean, that was virgin territory. That was great. And it's my understanding, I know it's in the process, boy, it's earth-moving city out there. You have sold that to someone else to develop?
Yeah, the.
I know you're doing the moving, you're doing the grunt work.
I'm doing the work.
Right, well, my, my.
The city's got the building permits, you're welcome to look at the building.
No, 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 I have no problem with that. I was really, that was great. But my concern is, you, you're, and I think it's great, and there's no reason why we shouldn't have faith in you, that you're able, that you have good things to point out and say, look what I've done, that's great. And Washington thrives on that. I mean, we really do. But at the same time, I would hate to see you come to a situation with, like that, that you sell it and once the zoning is passed, we got a whole new person with a whole new plan. And all they have to go on is what, with the limitations of the zoning. And so I have a concern that, you know, this is great and if you're going to be there and be the man and, and run it, but at the same time, I had no idea that, and I have no problem that you sold it and obviously it's developing and that's great. But in this situation, you've made verbally some real commitments to the neighbors, to the area, and I'd hate to see that turn over to somebody else, that all they would have, the only commitment they would have would be whatever the zoning that had been changed, where the limitations were that. Do you see where I'm coming from? And it's not that, I'm not casting aspersions on you at all because you're a businessman and that's what it's about. But at the same time, I just have a concern because this is a different setup in this, in this physical area than that was out there. So I don't want you to think I hate you or anything.
No, I, hey, you're doing your job, Carolyn, you're, you're doing your job.
I'm, I'm thrilled with that and I think that's the perfect place and you had a plan and everything. But you see, I have, you know, I would hate to see that get to the point where, what you have told us, that sounds, you know, like you're, you know, good. But at the same time, if something comes up, and, and okay, you didn't sell it to the Cracker Jack guy in St. Louis, but there are, tell me, there's a lot of people out there ready to throw money because Washington is up and coming and, and making investment. And I, I just, I have a little concern about that because we've talked about this with other things, that once the zoning is changed, it, it's a commitment, that that's what it is. And whoever is the owner of that property is only limited by the rules around that zoning, so.
If I heard Kurt correctly, and I don't know if, I mean, and Kurt can speak to this, but it sounded like that when you've transferred things in the past, that you've put restrictions into your transfer as far as what can or can't be done. Is that what we're talking about here?
That's correct. That's correct.
So, that's beyond the zoning, if they, if some, if a buyer were to buy something with deed restrictions, then they have to comply with what's in the deed restriction-
Right, but-
Not just the zoning, so.
But I just, I remember other issues in the past that-
Right, oh, I agree.
That, that once somebody makes that in, you know, the transfer of ownership, the zoning is then up to them, to what they choose to do within those limitations. And I just, I just feel better sharing that with you, because it's certainly not that I think, you know, but as I said, you're a businessman, that's what it's about, and while you have a commitment and a high commitment, I still have that, you know, worry.
Mr. Chairman. One of the things that, and I asked Mayor if he had better eyes than I did, and I don't know, Sal, if you can blow this up, but that strip of land above that, above the new road, Fox Creek or, or Fox Creek now, is only a hundred and twenty-five feet in depth.
Correct.
So, that whole northern strip is really, that's narrower than my lot is in Dawn Valley, on Michelle Drive. So, you can't get a big apartment building or anything like that, like you see higher, taller, bigger buildings in multifamily, there's no room there on that lot to build it, because it's not deep enough.
Right.
And if you go across the other way, even between the peach and the blue, where that's split, that's only, um, I can't read it, I think three-hundred-and-eighty-one feet. It, your, your space is not a big space, that you're gonna be able to put apartments in.
Right.
To where the duplexes and the fourplexes, which falls into the R3, is really about the only thing you can build on stuff like that.
That's right.
I just wanted to make that point, that, you know, you, you're, when you're looking at a map, you think it's a big area, but in reality, as far as buildable space, it's not that expanse. That's all I have.
Um, I've been silent so far, you guys. One of the reasons our forefathers put the mayor position on this board is to give us a orientation of looking at things from thirty thousand feet, and that's the way I'm gonna look at this. First and foremost, my staff is recommending it, they're the experts, so, uh, for me to vote no would be overriding their judgment, and I'm not ready to do that in this case, mostly because, uh, and, and Stonecrest residents, you guys don't hear this, right now, our schoolteachers, they can't afford a place to live here, okay? We don't have enough housing for them. Uh, Ed, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but what's your waiting list for shoe factory apartments? You know, and, and One Hundred West is the same thing. You guys are worried about, uh, the riffraff, for lack of a better term, moving into apartment building? You're gonna see a lot of teachers, if you ask me, because they don't have any place to live, and there's a lot of professional folks in town that are working in our industrial park that can't find a place to live, and it's only gonna get worse with the higher interest rates, okay? I, I, I understand your concerns, and the traffic concerns, we're trying to do that, this complies with our long-range plan, and, so, just you guys, just so you guys know, and I feel like I need to give you guys an explanation, I'm gonna vote yes.
Any other questions or comments by board members?
Sorry, I had some one.
Yeah, sure.
Please wait.
Please introduce yourself again.
Carolyn Sellers. This is for you. How do you rezone something without seeing a plan? He knows who the tenants are, he knows what the lighting is, he knows there'll be garages, but there's no plan. We have no idea what it's gonna be. So, how do you rezone it without, I mean, he could do anything with that property. I'm sure he's a great builder, don't know him, but you have no plan.
Well, I can, it, so, in our zoning code, we have planned and unplanned districts, which a planned district with PDR, Planned Residential, Planned Commercial, PDC, they require everything upfront, you have, the developer has to pay for the architectural drawings, the, that know the, um, the renderings, know how many units there're gonna be, all, everything in there, and that is one route that they can go. That's kind of a unique and peculiar, people only ask for that in, in special circumstances. Every other zoning district, so all of Stonecrest, everything in Rabbit Trail, is considered an unplanned residential district, which means they can request a rezoning without having to put all that upfront.
I understand that, but since this is part of a neighborhood, an R1 neighborhood, why would you do it with nothing, but just his promises?
Right.
Why would you even consider it until you see something on paper, until you can get the promise this Whit was looking for? You know? He can do anything he wants, and I guess you don't live there, but for those of us who've bought into the neighborhood, that's not appreciated, that you're just changing the zoning.
There are some limitations we're looking at with lot size and what can go in-
Not if you put it R3, there are-
Yes, yes, still. We, we have to get a road through there, that's one thing we're gonna require.
Okay.
It has to make a connection, that's a big piece of-
And how about the sewers and stuff?
Yeah, that all goes in with it.
Who's paying for that?
Well, the developer does.
Well, pay, he'll pay for on the property, but up to the property, who pays for that?
It's at the property.
Still the developer, yeah.
Yeah.
Developer.
They have to make the connection with the main line, sewer.
Right, and the main line will handle an apartment complex that you don't know?
Well, we know how big it could be possibly, with the size of the lot.
Okay, so how many units are you talking about?
We don't know.
We don't know for sure, but we know it won't be a huge development.
So, you don't know, you just, you don't know how many units?
No, we don't. We don't know exactly how many units.
Right.
Yeah.
But you're going to change the zoning-
Mm-hmm.
Because-
Possibly, we don't know yet, we'll see.
I just don't see why, you just get a plan first, something that you can commit into.
Well, it, it's not required, and that's what Sal was trying to explain to you, a plan is not required.
I, I see that, but-
But a hearing is required, and that's why we're having a hearing.
Okay.
And, I mean, I can tell you, I mean, any, I mean, if a developer's going to choose to come in here and lie to this board, they're choosing to do so at their own peril.
What are you gonna do? I mean, ser- no, I mean, really, what are you gonna do?
Oh, you'd be, uh, listen, if, if they wanna lie to us and then come to us and expect something else, that's going to be very difficult.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Always wrap this up. The way it works is, we're going, and I'll talk while he's, we vote on this, and then it goes to the city council at the next meeting, and they approve it or not approve it. So, just wanted to make that clear.
Hi, I'm Tom Miller again, with, uh, Springcrest. So, what I heard today was, Kurt, you said you're gonna build six, eight plexes.
Well, uh, wait, talk to us, we'll get, we'll get the answers.
That's, that's what came out of your mouth the last time you were up here. What I heard earlier was, that was contradiction, is that you were planning on selling the land. Correct?
That's, we'll get the answers.
Okay. So, there's no commitment, there's no review board of what's gonna go up there, you don't know, you're not gonna know until after he sells the land, you're not even sure what can fit in there, how it's gonna fit in there. Isn't that enough reason to make it a conditional approval? That's the least you could do.
Well, it costs a lot to develop a plan.
It costs a lot of the money for these people behind me to lose a hundred thousand dollars on their appreciation on their houses.
Well, yeah, that, that's not-
Well, I know what you're saying, but money is money, right? I'm a businessman, too.
That's not for certain.
Either is what's going in there is for certain. The only way you can make it certain is to make it conditional, and that's a nice and fair compromise, otherwise, there's no guarantees. You can't guarantee us anything. We're just asking for something to be fair. This is a city that's built its reputation on extremely good zoning and common sense. That's why people wanna live here. That's why I moved down here. I moved here to get out of the rat race up there. You don't wanna lose that.
No, we don't, and that's-
You wanna keep that.
Yes.
That's what makes everyone play nice in a sandbox.
Mm-hmm, and that's what we've done in the past with developments.
So, why wouldn't we wanna make it conditional?
Because we haven't, we haven't always done that in the past. Some situations we have, but-
Because of why?
Oh, various reasons. I mean, yeah, everything from traffic to making sure how they're gonna egress the property, uh, ingress, egress, all those type of things that fit in.
I, I believe Kurt would make a wonderful development out of it, but not when he told me he was gonna sell the land, and I guess their townhouses, that means each one's gonna have their own door?
If you would, talk to us, talk to us again, please talk to us again.
Well, I don't know, do you know the answer?
Well, we'll get it. What was your question?
He mentioned six, eight plexes, is that eight plexes, is that gonna have one door per eight units, or is that per front door for each unit? I don't know that. You don't know that. If it was in a plan, you would know that, and we would know that. And that's only fair.
Thank you so much for sharing.
Yeah. Kurt, would you like to come up and answer that?
I'm not sure what the, the question was, but-
You said six or eight units?
Four, five, six, eight. I, I said, I said those would be either six plexes or eight plexes, but as Mr. Borgman pointed out, basically, those can only fit there on the, on the west and north side, and once you get necked down over there, then you gotta go with a smaller, what's, like at, uh, Willow, Willow's there, where they're, they're, they're built, it's all level, uh, senior access in, um, similar, again, not, not picking on hazy acres, but those are fourplexes, they'll, they'll look a lot nicer than those, those are dated, but, uh, they'll be similar to those as well. Because of the road network, uh, I don't have the ability, and in fact, you inadvertently pointed out something that they should, should be happy about, if a big bad developer was gonna maximize the buildability of that zoning with, with Cart Blanks, that gimme what, the thing, which he's, I understand, he comes from St. Charles County, that, like I said, they raped and stripped the ground, I wouldn't put that second road in there. Road A wouldn't be there. I would just put one road in there, which the city wants, and everything would be private, and then I would stack 'em in there like cordwood, okay?
Yep.
But I don't do stuff like that. My, I, I'm, I'm gonna go on record here, next year, I will be developing in this town thirty years, thirty years, and most developers don't last, and God willing, the creeks don't rise, and a one, wonderful wife who supported me, somehow, we haven't gone bankrupt yet developing. All my guys before me have, because they get forced into telling, everybody's telling them what to do with their land, and I've always made this comment, and I'll meet with anybody after this meeting, if they wanna buy this land and develop it, it's for sale, buy it. But I have a right, as an American, to pursue my life, what I do, and my track record speaks for itself. I don't build, as, to borrow your words, riffraff housing. Single-family housing can be riffraff housing, and I don't, again, this is a public, if the newspaper wouldn't put it in the paper, I'd tell you where to go look in this town, but I can point out several single-family developments that were built on the cheap, and those were I'd be concerned about if I was a city father, because of what you just mentioned, Mayor, is we are under this pressure of providing good housing, and when all this housing pressure comes, the growth comes, everybody leaves St. Charles to come to Franklin County, everybody leaves Baldwin to come to Franklin County. Um, you know, when I was a kid, uh, everybody knew everybody's name, I knew everybody in Stonecrest in phase one, maybe phase two, after that, I couldn't tell you, I couldn't tell you who lives there and who doesn't live there. In fact, I, socially, if people say, oh, I live in Stonecrest, they didn't even know I developed it, and, and that's the way it should be. If it's done right, it's quality development, no matter whose name's on it.
Well, I agree, Kurt, and I think that, uh, you know, you're saying a lot when you say that, because, you know, we don't know how lucky we are in Washington to have good developers, so, and that helps the Planning and Zoning Commission as well, because we can make our decisions using that. And you're not the only one, there's two more right here in this room tonight.
Yeah, no, that's right, the, the guys that are in this room have done quality stuff, and, you know, I, I, uh, I've had mixed emotions, but I, I just think, once the track builders come, and they're, they're not from here, they're, they don't, they're not vested in this town.
Kurt, I have a question. When you did the first plat in Stonecrest, did you personally build those houses, or did you have a contractor build those houses?
I sold those, I sold those to good quality, custom builders.
So, you're, you're, you did that with every plat, and I'm just making sure everybody understands that.
I think, I, you know, John, that's a good question. In the down economy, I helped out a builder who was in bad way, and I fronted him the money, and he built, uh, two houses in phase one, and I backed him, and we sold them, you know, but I put up the money, so technically, I guess I bought the building permit, I was the builder of record, and then I did that back in, uh, two thousand twelve.
So, my point is-
Same way, I helped young, some young builders get started, but I, I don't, I, I don't drive nails, I'm not a hammer guy, I'm a dirt guy and a land guy.
That's why I'm, my point is, you're the developer, and you've always had a builder build every house in Stonecrest.
Right.
Here we are again, you're the developer, with your selected builder that's gonna build in the R3.
Yeah, in phase one, I had a builder challenge me, we have restrictions, it's real clear, brick and stone fronts, eight-twelve pitch, two-car garage minimum. Builder puts vinyl siding on the front of a house around the lake, and I went up to him politely and said, you didn't follow the plans, you can either tear that off and put it in stone, or we can go to court, your choice, but that ain't gonna fly. And he, he admitted it, he screwed up and took care of it, put stone on the front of that house.
Thank you.
So, again, it's making sure that the guy who's doing it is gonna do it right and, and, and put his name on it. And I've been doing this twenty-nine years, I can show every, the people in this room where I built, that people that aren't from Washington don't know the under stalls, don't know me, I, I stand behind what I do, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a question or comment? Okay, any by board? Faked me out.
Yeah.
Any other questions by board members, comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Roll call.
Mark Hydrich?
Nay.
Mark Kleisner?
R.
Tom Homar?
Yes.
Mayor Doug Hingerman?
Yes.
John Borgman?
Yes.
Chuck Watson?
Yes.
Samantha Whacker?
Yes.
Helen Witt?
No.
Mike Wood?
No.
Six to three. All right, so that is just for the rezoning, and this will be heard next week, Monday, at Planning and Zoning. City Council, we're at Planning and Zoning. All right, and then we need a motion for the second one, which is just, again-
The preliminary plat.
Just the plat for, and there was no road A, it's just this road, and it's under the condition that it's Earth Crest, not Fox Crest, or, it's whatever condition you want, that was my recommendation, sorry.
Okay, motion to approve with the name change per city's recommendation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Sal, do you still want a roll call?
No.
Did, did we have some nay, I think we had nays, didn't we?
No.
No, okay, okay, not on the plat, okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Righty, thank you very much, appreciate how- All righty, thank you very much. Appreciate how silver everybody was and did a great job. It's the seventeenth City Council meeting.
Yes.
So that would be the next step. We ask if you're going to leave, please try to leave quietly so we can continue on with the meeting. Thank you very much. Item number five, file number twenty-two, one zero zero one, dash fifteen, Washington Avenue rezoning. Sal?
Give it a minute.
Real quick.
In and out.
If you would, if you want to talk, if you would, go outside, please.
All right.
Okay.
So our, the second request tonight is a request for another rezoning. This one is, like we talked about in the last one, is a request for a planned development, so PDR, Planned Residential. What I want to make clear at this point is that this is a different process than a typical rezoning. There is a sketch plan that is reviewed by City Council, and I have the steps laid out in your staff report, the order. But there is a sketch plan review by city staff, and that sketch plan review is then, the sketch plan is then reviewed by Planning and Zoning. A preliminary plan is then brought back to Planning and Zoning, and then that preliminary plan is brought to City Council, and then final plan brought to City Council. So basically, it goes to city staff informally the first time, Planning and Zoning twice, City Council twice. So where we're at tonight, or in this process, we've had the sketch plan review with city staff, and they're just asking for the sketch plan review tonight. So with a motion to approve tonight, you're not approving, it's a motion to move forward on to the next step, is essentially what you're doing. And you're accepting the sketch plan, making comments or changes based on the public hearing or based on your own comments. And then they have to come back at another meeting, either next month, or they can come back in December. But, so the subject property is on Washington Avenue, between Washington Avenue and Madison Avenue, just south of American Legion here. It is about three point three, just north of there, just about three point three acres. Over, there's a bluff here. This is part of the original town of Basora, which is hence the name of Basora Bluffs. It is kind of on top of a hill overlooking the river. So in this case, the property is currently zoned R1B, single-family residential. So that is a higher-density, single-family that allows for six thousand square foot lots. In this case, with three point three acres, they would be able to do twenty-four homes if they were just to come in today and not go to Planning and Zoning, just come into, well, to plat it, they would. But just to get it designed as a single-family under the current zoning, they could put twenty-four homes on there. It would obviously take a lot of grading, because there is a significant topographic change from Washington Avenue down to Madison.
How much difference is there? I mean-
I do have a topo map.
But it's like you've got a lot of trees to actually see how much the difference is.
It's a pretty big drop.
Well, I know.
Fifty foot in that, so it would, I mean, I'm not saying it's impossible, but, yeah. So even if you were to try and put a street in there, it probably wouldn't-
No, I know that.
It wouldn't meet our grade requirements.
I know, right, I know that. I'm just wondering how much difference there was between the-
About fifty feet.
Okay.
And so in this case, because we talked about, PDR is typically saved for kind of what we call unique and peculiar situations, where there is something specific about the lot that they can't develop under the current zoning. And they're asking for some, some changes to what that typical zoning, the underlying zoning would have. In this case, I think the argument can be made that it is the topography, that they're not truly able to build to the full capacity of the zoning would allow because of that. And so again, R1B, you do have R1B all the way around, so all single-family in the vicinity, except for to the south. You know, that's obviously commercial use, just zone that way, and then the hospital complex is all zone commercial. So the full plan was put in your packet. I'm not going to go through the entire sheet by sheet. And I, we did send the preliminary packet to the neighbors with everyone within one hundred and eighty-five feet as well. It, after the sketch plan review with city staff, they have revised it. So you guys in your packet did see the, what I'm showing you tonight. But there has been a couple changes since we sent the letters out. So what they're proposing is essentially a duplex development. It's just not in the traditional duplex development we've seen in the city limits over the decades. But they are proposing thirteen two-family buildings. And so instead of a duplex where you just have a shared wall and a unit on each side, these are a kind of stair-step duplexes, where one unit has three stories and the second one has two. And so they kind of stair-step down. And you can see here, this is Washington Avenue existing. They have their private fire lane, driveway, whatever you want to call it. It does meet the fire lane requirements, twenty-six foot wide. Coming through here, you can actually see they have AutoCAD of a fire truck meeting that turn radius all the way through. And there's a few, there's a site plan layer that does show all the turning radii. But you can see there's thirteen buildings, all of, twelve of which do access this internal drive, and then one of which does access Madison Avenue. They do have some amenities here with a pickleball court. Again, I guess it is more popular than we thought. And then each unit does have two parking spaces per our typical residential code, plus, I believe, there are eight or so guest parking, so they are overparked, allowing them to not have to utilize any on-street parking for this development. They can, not only every unit will have two spaces, but then they have additional guest parking as well. And you can see there is a landscape plan here, so our sketch plan does require a basic landscape plan to say what type of use, what type of landscaping you're going to have. And you can see they do have the majority of new trees planted, so anything not in color is existing. The majority of new trees planted is along Washington Avenue and then to the north here to create a buffer between the existing and the proposed, which is what we would recommend in this case anyway. Because there are setbacks here, you can see, do get a little bit closer than what you would typically allow if it was to just go R1A. So when it's, when it's a planned district, you set the setbacks per, per plan. But they are requesting a minimum ten feet from Washington Avenue, with building twelve down here being the closest. And then on Madison, there is a setback of eleven feet off of Madison down here. So you can see that's kind of the closest buildings, and as you get further up here, they're, they're all have separate setbacks. As for the site plan here, you can just see this has kind of the full turning radius. Their engineer drew to show that it meets the fire lane requirements, that all sides can be accessed by a fire truck. And then they have some of the amenities here, or some of the utility locates called out on here. They do show an area for stormwater if needed, just kind of saying, hey, if, if the engineers decide that there does need to be a detention basin, they have an area designated. At this early in the stage, we do not require them to have the complete stormwater calculations done. That's all would be done before the final plan. When a development is this close to the river, there is a chance, and this is all would be verified by our city engineer, there's a chance they may be able to get it directly into the river and not actually have to retain any of it on-site. Because our stormwater code requires that everything to get into the river, but if you're further away from it, you have to retain it and slowly release. So the closer you are, the less you have to retain. So. And this is the utility plan. I just wanted to point out, currently, there is that alley, that, an undeveloped alley. We have Rideaway that runs between Madison Avenue and Washington Avenue, and there is a sewer line, you can see here, that runs in between there. So that would have to be removed and replaced into a different location. They do show a new upsized water line coming from First Street all the way down the development and actually looping through, all the way through, and then removing this sewer line and having a sewer line come up and loop through as well. And so at the sketch plan meeting, our Public Works Director, as long as, as well as our Public Works Superintendent with Water and Sewer, reviewed this and had no comments or concerns with that. The current line on Washington Avenue would not be able to handle the water, but there is a big enough line at First Street that they can extend up from there, and that is the plan, to get adequate water and sewer. This is the, the architectural drawings of the lot layout. And so you can kind of see, I highlighted here in blue. So you have, this is just the roof floor plan. You have your second floor, third floor, ground floor. So if you start at the ground floor here, your blue is all one unit. So you've got Unit A, and then your second story, you go upstairs, and then your third story. And so that is all stacked. And then your Unit B, they actually have the entire, more, more than half of the ground floor, and then one floor up, and then nothing on the third floor. And you'll get a better idea of kind of what that looks like here. And so you can see, this is the Madison Avenue one, where they're kind of stair-stepped up. Again, this is a view looking from the river, so these will be the ones with the river views. So this kind of L is one side of the duplex, and here is the other side of the duplex. And again, here. Again, just another view, you can kind of see how the buildings are aligned, so you can't really see the road coming in, but it wraps around here. And then you have your one off Madison Avenue, and then these here. And they did have a note on there, they're going to keep most of the landscaping here, except for all the trees and then anything that's kind of overgrown and non, non, I guess native or whatever term they use in there. There will be some taken, but not enough that the buffer is going to be completely removed and landscaping from there. Again, just another view, so you can kind of see, they have some of the buffer, the landscaping shown here. You can kind of get a better idea over the property line for the setbacks. So obviously, this is a little bit, this side yard here is a little bit closer to Washington Avenue, but that's why they have the buffer there. And then here on Madison, I assume that is pushed off a little bit because that way they could have driveways and have some additional off-street parking off Madison. I will say, that's not as much of a concern on Madison as it would be on Washington Avenue, because there's no other homes here that access, that you'd be taking, you wouldn't have an overflow of off-street parking, or on-street parking. Here, we would be concerned about them wanting to utilize on-street parking on Washington Avenue, which is, they do handle that with them having enough parking, but they do push kind of above and beyond Madison Avenue back to even allow driveway parking. Again, just another view that was in the site plan. And then here is some of the architectural styles as part of the sketch plan. They have to give some type of rendering or style of what it will look like. And so I think they call this a buff color, a buff color brick. And then kind of black or darker concrete metal lining, kind of, they call this, well, just modern architecture is how they describe it in this note here. So they do kind of give a style, again, at the sketch plan portion of this, we don't need full 3D renderings of exactly what it's going to look like, but we need an idea and for the neighborhood and for you all to see what it's going to look like. So this does meet the intent of our sketch plan at this point. And so I'll kind of leave it there. I just wanted to point out, we did, there is a list of items in our code that have to be shown on the sketch plan. We went through them, item by, item by item with our city staff to make sure they were all addressed. And if they're not shown on the plan, they are mentioned in a note on that first page. So we believe it, it meets the intent of the sketch plan. So we definitely recommend moving forward to the next step of the process and hearing more from the neighborhood and letting them kind of revise and continue to invest in the plans. But as for the plan itself and how it fits into the neighborhood, you know, like I mentioned before, this develop, this parcel can allow up to twenty-four homes, they, if they were a single-family. They're asking for twenty-six with duplex. So I think if you are to look at the intent of our PDR, our Planned Residential definition, this pretty much hits the nail right on the head of the intent of that district. You have a, for Planned Residential, you have a lot that has some type of constraints to it that aren't any fault of the, of the owner. And in this case, the topography there would not allow for them to get the highest and best use that the zoning would allow. And so the PDR essentially allows them to take the density that they would be permitted on that whole lot and just kind of, sorry, and just kind of group it together on a portion of it. And then obviously, that's the point of the PDR as well, to have a sketch plan, have a chance for everyone to comment and see exactly what will be, what they will look like, how many units there will be, the sizes. They can talk on price points. At this point, it's not something that we would really get into discussions with on price points, but obviously, the desired market can be something that's conditionalized with the design. But so staff recommends approval of this for them to move forward. Again, we think it, it fits in nicely with kind of transitioning. You have, again, a residential zoning to the south, but you have a commercial use directly to the south. And so this allows you kind of that step up without getting too dense and transitioning directly into a multifamily development. I think it's a good compromise for the neighborhood, I guess is the best way to put it.
Questions or comments by board?
I'll just let the board know, I've talked to Tim Frankenberg, Fire Chief, and I believe he's talked to the developer at site review, and there's willingness to sprinkler the entire complex. So that's a huge plus for this. So moving forward, I think they've reached an agreement with the Water Department to be able to do that. And that new six-inch main around there is significant with that.
So Sal, to be clear, tonight, we, we are voting on the rezoning to the PD, the planned development? Or what are we, what exactly are we voting on?
So accepting the sketch plan and then making comments, so what-
Okay, so not a rezoning, just the sketch plan review for tonight?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to be clear what we're doing exactly.
It's essentially the opportunity to send them back with comments from not only you all, but the public, that they have to come back at the next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, or in two months. They can come, you know, whenever they're ready and submit the next set of plans. So the preliminary plan section of this in our, in our, we have a checklist. It's everything that you just saw, plus items. And so it gets a little more detailed each step. And so it's just a way to have the public involved at every step. And then just, because everyone watched the last public hearing, the difference between the rezoning at Stonecrest and this is that this plan is submitted, attached to the ordinance. So, you know, it is-
Right, they have to put it on the plan.
Yes.
Yes.
If they wanted to change it, we'd have to come back and do it again.
Exactly, okay. Just wanted to make sure that we are clear on which step and how far we were getting tonight.
Any other questions or comments by board?
Is each individual unit for sale or for rent?
That is a question for the applicant. I actually don't know the answer to that. Yes, you're done with me.
Yep, come on up. Introduce yourself.
Good evening. I'm Steve Ward. I'm the architect with the developer, Florenz. He's here. It is a for-sale townhome project, an unstacked project, so they're side by side. And there's a lot of reasons for that. The first, the first, the place to start is the location. The fact that this is available where it is with what we are considering now to be like a walkable distance from downtown, and what's happening with downtown makes it perfect for Florenz's new development here. The idea of this project was to take advantage of the river and develop a product type, a typology of building that allowed the most views from every place on the property. So twenty out of the twenty-six units has a real view, not like there's an ocean view or there's a river view and it's just a little sliver. The design, if you could, Sal, could you forward to some of the 3D? That one's pretty good. That one's pretty good. That's to the, that's to the north, to the northeast, or northwest. So what this illustrates is the stacking buildings. The reason that they're one, two, three, and the reason they're stacked the way they are is that not only do they step at least ten feet between each other on the topography going up the hill, they shift eighteen feet. So you get, you get the three-story to the side of the next two-story, so you have a view corridor between them, and then you have a view over the top. In addition to that, when you turn them sideways, have you noticed Building Thirteen, that's all the way to the back of the property? There's also views from the bedrooms over the top of the lower roofs. So no matter which way you turn the typology, you get views in all directions. And that works really well for development when you're talking about a Type V wood frame project. There's so much topography on the site. Without reducing the footprints of the building and making them as small as possible, you can't put this many on the site. And you also block views of people behind you. So this was quite an effort in trying to see how we could make it an affordable cost per square foot development so that the materials and the housing product could be very high-quality. So the idea is to appeal to empty nesters, retirees, two-income professionals at the higher end of the market. So if you've got kids in college or kids, kids out of the house, and you're looking to downsize and live in a very high-quality place with a river view, this is, that's the target market here. The other idea is that it's already wooded, and it's got the natural landscape around it and the river trail and downtown Washington, so you've got all sorts of walkable amenities. So the idea was spend the least amount of money on the, you know, the internals of the project, framing and the likes. framing and the likes, we're doing standard heights, we're not cutting studs, we're being as efficient as we can with infrastructure, standard Type 5 residential construction. And since they're not stacked, we can use a sprinkler system called 13D, which means that we can share the domestic water, which means that we're not bringing in $50,000 worth of hydrants and bringing in six-inch mains and backwater preventors and fancy fire alarm systems. So it's a, it's a very reliable system that the Fire Marshal suggested to us and we did research on it and worked with a local Washington company to make sure that it was viable. So basically, the way they're sited is to eliminate as many retaining walls as possible and also to do the least amount of grading possible. So for instance, the highest basement wall out of the ground, which may or may not be occupied, it's not detailed yet, is about 16 feet. And that is the worst-case scenario, most of them are in the three to four foot out of the ground, opposed to the other side where you're driving in a driveway. And they operate similar to the last, to the last project. The idea of the last project is that you're entering on grade at all of these and you also have outdoor space on grade for all of these. So every unit has a patio, every unit has a front door that's on grade that's at the level of the garage. So they're also designed, so there's a little section, I don't know if I can, yeah, you can use this.
Yeah, so here's the laser, it's a digital laser.
They're designed to be adaptable. This column right here is a Juliet balcony. It's designed to have a door to open and to be able to go out there. Let's say you smoke, your wife doesn't, you go out there, you smoke a cigarette or you're just out there with a cup of coffee sitting on a chair. It's tiny, but it's four feet square. And the idea of that is that any one of these units, it's three stories or two stories, is adaptable to an elevator. So let's say you have a medium to high-income couple comes in here, they can age out in this house, install an elevator in that location and they would be designed that way, so there's no structural embers in that four-foot square so that they have the market value to that, to that market group. So they are, they're an elevator building delivered without elevators unless, unless they pre-sell and someone says they want an elevator. So I'm sure the developer, I'm sure Florin was up for that, we've talked about this. So the idea is an efficiency of siding, small footprints, maximizing views because, you know, who wants to be in the unit that's blocked by your other unit? They're also designed to have like a steel roof and no encapsulated roof areas, like no parapets, so that they have a ton of longevity. The outside of the buildings have been, are thought of as brick veneer and concrete basements so that you don't have paint flaking off and you have very little maintenance. And everyone has a garage, everyone has space to put things inside. So for instance, it will have an HOA, it will have restrictions. And part of those restrictions and what we're proposing is no dumpsters, no dumpsters, no trash enclosures outside. All the trash is inside your garage and would be restricted that way in perpetuity for the project. So you put your cans out on the, on trash day, trash comes and picks it up and you put it in, you're required to put it in, and it's part of your garage and your situation, just like it would be in a single-family home. So, so that's, that's the idea. And if anybody has any questions, I think I'm happy to answer.
Do you have one, John?
Yes, I do. What is the section that does stick above the roof line, is that a chimney?
Chimneys.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 so in each, in each one, so for instance, right here, this is the living space of the B unit, this is the dining, this is the kitchen, there's a fireplace in every one of the living spaces. As you stack up the three-story, this is a fireplace in an office or a bedroom, whatever you want to make it, it's the entry level. Fireplace in the living room, fireplace in the master. So you have like, it's, it's a fully amenitized but inexpensive building type, so there are...
Gas fireplace or?
Gas, I would think, yeah, I mean, we haven't talked about that, but... The market, the market is, you know, young timers in their 50s that are retired, right? So someone that wants, that doesn't want to have a big yard to mow, someone that just, that's going to be traveling, this type of thing. And they're, they're, the intent is for sale. Now whether they are rentable, I think that's a discussion that we can talk about. Like if someone's, if an owner buys one and rents it out, I mean, that is all really up to this group and what the city's looking for. Hopefully, no one's renting these and no one's Airbnb-ing these and that their owner occupied, that's the point, quality.
If that's the plan, I mean, you can put that in your covenants that, you know, to have a minimum rental time or something of that nature.
Could. And I understand that the covenants are required for the final approval of the PDR.
So this is the only time that we ask for copies of covenants or restrictions is whenever it's in a planned district.
And so that'll be later on, after they get the final?
At the final, yes, the last step, well, actually, so, it's a good point. It may only go to City Council, I'll have to look what portion of the sketch plan or the... They may not have to turn that in until the final, which would not go to Planned Zoning, it would just go to City Council.
Any other questions, comments by board?
Looks nice.
Right, yep.
Neat design, good concepts.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Anyone in the audience that would like to come up and speak?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Joanne Radetick and I live at Number 2 River Pilot Point, which is like right across the cul-de-sac from this proposed development. I have actually written up my talk so that you can look at it. That's the same thing I'm going to say, but I referenced portions of the Plan Development residential ordinance. And so I'll go into that first. My comments are, so far, as I've seen, there's been some updates to it from the packet that we were sent. So this may not all be valid, but the, our existing, I want to first give you some points on our existing family neighborhood design character. And it's a single family, you noticed on the board that it's completely surrounded by single-family residential. And so our neighborhood has a grid pattern of streets and driveways. The houses, for the most part, have brick veneer, but it's red brick veneer and the proposal was buff brick. And the buff brick really is more like on the hospital or for, or what was on like the marijuana dispensary or, you know, things like that, the commercial areas. So to fit in better with the residential, buff brick would be better.
Do you mean red brick or?
I mean the red brick, thank you.
I understood you correctly.
Thank you, yeah, red brick would be better and as opposed to the commercial and the institutional color that's associated with the buff brick in this community anyway. Also, like our neighborhood has a uniform, low-density and it's all traditional-style, single-family homes. They aren't attached, so... And I, then I referenced the proposed planned design elements that are incompatible with the existing residential neighborhood. The streets and driveways in the proposed development are not in a grid pattern that align with the existing streets and driveways. A proposed buff brick color exterior veneer is incongruous with the existing residential neighborhood and the historic character of the community. And like I said before, lighter-colored brick has traditionally been used more for institutions and commercial buildings. And speaking of commercial, even though it might seem like it's a commercial business, the American Legion is really more of a park-like area in our neighborhood. It's not really commercial. They have events and whatnot, but it's really more of a park-like area. And it's still the same, you know, zoning. The building styles that they presented in the plan do not appear to be visually compatible with the existing residential neighborhood. The density and the placement of the buildings on the south half of the proposed development are not compatible with the adjacent residential neighborhood on First Street. And then in the Plan Development residential ordinance, there were certain objectives and performance standards. And these items then that are listed on the paper I gave you do not seem to conform to the performance standards. The site planning is not compatible with the adjacent residential neighborhood. Planned driveways do not create safe, efficient and effective traffic circulation. There's inadequate and unsafe vehicular access for the proposed density and the planned building placement does not meet the 30-foot wide perimeter buffer requirements for adjacent lower-density residential property. And then the plan shows buildings being built over a sewer line, but supposedly that's been changed. Well, then I have my personal comments. So first I addressed how it looks like the proposal doesn't conform to the ordinance. And so then I have my personal comments. And that's, for 15 years, our neighborhood's been concerned about what would happen when the time came to face the development of this property with such an outstanding river view. The view is a resource that should be used to full advantage without destroying the residential character of the neighborhood or adversely affecting the perception of the historic character of the town as visitors and residents coming across the Missouri River Bridge approach the community. So it should fit in with the character of our town. The development should be visually compatible with the existing residential neighborhood and with the character of this community, not the West Coast. The increased traffic and first responder access is a safety issue that concerns me. I have only one way in and out of my property off of Washington Avenue. All of the increased traffic from the planned developments proposed to go on to Washington Avenue within a few feet of my driveway. The property is likely an archaeological site. Various artifacts such as prehistoric tools, flakes and arrowheads will be found. It's also quite possible that there are unmarked human burials as have been discovered on most of the bluffs that overlook the river. The plan shows buildings being built over a sewer line. Now my property has a 30-foot wide utility sewer and water easement on my driveway where I cannot build anything, so the developers shouldn't build their proposed buildings, seven and number 10, over a sewer line shown on the plan. Now, if they move that around, I don't know where my sewer line's going because that's mine. Is it going to zigzag around and get messed up? I don't know. The developers should put a driveway there over the sewer line instead of buildings. And then the final comment I have is on the plan, the buildings number one, number 11, number 12 and number 13 do not show a 30-foot buffer as stipulated in the PDR ordinance requirements. So that's my comments. And I have, if anybody, I don't know who to get this to, but I did print out a copy of the state statutes regarding unmarked human burials.
Give it to Gina.
Who?
Me.
Gina.
Oh, okay. Yeah, if you can make sure that the statute, that copy of the statutes get to whoever is supposed to watch for bones. And that's all I have, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I just want to point out a couple of things. If you remember, and this is just because our website's not updated yet, our city code is held, is updated on our website by a third party and it can take months for them to update it. Sometimes they only do it once a year. So that is an outdated code online. There is not a 30-foot buffer requirement on planned districts. Buffers are per-approved plan.
Well, the one that I printed out said it was like as of April.
It may have been like...
This year.
Yeah.
Just this past April. Because it was like, it wasn't in with the codes, it was like at the top of the page attached.
Yeah, and that's, it may have...
And signed.
But that's, the buffer requirements in April were taken out, they're per-approved plan.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm positive of it. I just wanted to let everyone know that, that we did go through, it does meet the minimum, minimum requirements of the code it does, of the new code that's been updated.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments on any of the other? Obviously, the water line's being moved and will be on easement and it will not affect the neighbors.
And since they are owner-operated, we talked about them being, it will have to be a public line through there with individual taps because we don't allow individual taps to come off of a private line. So it'll be a public line in an easement through the driveway. And I just, I wanted to get the language right on what exactly you are voting on. So tonight, of course, now it just disappeared on me. So, sketch plan. The Plan Zoning Commission shall, shall inform the prospective applicant that the sketch plan does or does not meet the intent of the PD regulations. Any action of the Plan Zoning Commission on the sketch plan does not constitute approval or endorsement of the proposed development. So it is just saying that it meets the minimum requirements and the intent of the code, your vote tonight. Just to, we're clear, I wanted to get that right, so.
Okay.
Any other comments, come on up.
I have a few questions. My name is, my name is Kristin Jones.
You can pull that down, you can pull that down.
Is that better?
Yeah.
I live at the dead end of Madison, so I am facing this development out of my front door. Now currently, it's all, that hillside is all overgrown trees. Now I didn't get a real specific on what is planned for that. Is that going to be a landscaped area, is that, are they going to leave it the way it is or?
We can find that out later. Yeah, we can find that out for you, if you have any plans.
The other thing I was wondering is, and you may not know this, but I've lived there 31 years. And right across from me, even to the south a little bit, raw sewage comes out of that hillside from behind the American Legion. It's in the tree area, I would walk over there with the chickens and I could hear this water like flushing. And I found where that pipe was coming out of that hillside and you could hear flushing and raw sewage. And then if my dogs got loose, there's a drainage area that comes down the hill and around the base of this property and then drains into a little creek and right into the river. And I mean, it is noxious, gray, stinky. If the dog ever got, gets into that, it's just like, it's horrendous. And I brought it up to my city, my city councilman once before, but anyway, nothing ever became of it. But anyway, they should, maybe they want to address, know that that's a problem.
Yeah, I just wrote it down.
It might not be that way anymore.
With or without this plan, I'm glad you brought it up, we'll have someone look at it.
Yeah, it's been about 10 years since I've been walking over there, the poison ivy got too thick. So, anyway, and then the third thing that I wanted to ask is that when I looked at my plat book at the Recorder of Deeds of my property and this property, it was about 2,000 or so. The property line for this property, their property, encompassed the street. And the street on, in the Recorder of Deeds encompassed my front yard, there's three of our houses, so that our property line is 10 foot from our house. And then the rest of that property out to the current street... And then, the rest of that property out to the current street is listed as the street. It's not our property. So, did this, and this property took their property line, encompassed the street. Was, now, it was reconciled with the hospital when they did their parking lot. They got the city to vacate their part of that. But none of our houses were, is that ever been?
It's really just probably an issue with the plat of how it looks online and shown on here, because this is from the original town of Osora. The street may have not been built in the exact same right spot.
Right.
But I don't think there's any concern of...
Well...
...street moving. There's no plan to move the street.
I know, but that property is not mine. It's the city's. And...
I wouldn't be able to...
Well, we'll look into that also.
And I don't know about their property line was on, you know, the west side of the street.
That would be, that would be a separate issue from this.
Yep. He'll look into that, too. Sal's good at that.
Yeah, okay. And is there a square foot estimate of these townhomes?
We'll find out.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Gretchen Burton, and I'm actually here on a different issue, number seven, but I feel like I can offer insight on this, because I live in the townhomes that face the riverfront now, that Andy Understall developed. And they were speaking of young professionals, that's me and my husband, so I can actually speak to their market here. I would very much make them change buff brick. Do not let them do that. It does not match our town. It does, you know, I very much agree with the lady, and I would not do anything veneer. Keep this high-quality, if you're gonna do it. I think it's a great idea. The other thing that they sold, that I heard in the notes, was this is walkable to downtown. If you are doing, no offense to anyone in, in the panel here, but if you're doing your age, walkable to downtown, no, it's not. Everyone that lives in my units, we are the youngest by 25 years, and there's two couples out of our eight units, and only us and one other couple walk. So, walkable to downtown is, is not, you know, not something that you should be considering in that, that prior. But I do think it's a great idea. I just want to, now that you guys have drones, look at the drone riverfront pictures, the newest development of Andy's. And I love Andy. Don't, you know, nothing bad to say about him. However, the newest development that he built does not match the, the riverfront of our town. And so if you're going for very consistent, and you want it to look the same on the other side of the river, you really need to consider that. So, that's the only thing I wanted to say about that.
Thank you.
I have one more question.
Okay.
I'm sorry. If they're counting on this view of the river, how are the trees gonna be handled? You know, they were illegally cut down previously to get this view.
They can only take care of trees on their property.
So, you can't really say that this is gonna be...
I guess if they sell it, I guess if they sell it and it's a river view, at that time, they can say it. But, yeah, trees may grow.
There's no plans to...
No. Not that I'm aware of. Or you sell?
Front trail.
Yeah, not...
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
But you're also three stories tall.
It's way above the trail.
You're also two and three stories above the...
Yeah.
It's way above the trail.
Anyone else in the audience?
I can answer a couple questions.
Just wait a second, we'll get...
I want to get up. I've been sitting way too long.
Okay.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Ron Williams. Live with my wife Kathy at 1115 East First. We are two houses up from this proposed development. Been there for 37 years. What brought me here was to be the city engineer back in 1985. States seven years, say I'm old. Now, what that means is I'm old. Been here seven, was there seven-plus years, moved to Sunset Hills, was there 11-plus years, went over to Columbia, Illinois, was there for eight-plus years, finished my career out of Franklin County, five-plus years. The one thing I, I have in common, especially with the cities, I was a zoning administrator. So I feel your pain. And also had to be a Franklin County Planning and Zoning Commissioner with the county, because that's a state statute. So, to say I had to deal with codes is a little bit of an understatement. But, I did that, so naturally, I dive into the codes. So, some things I want to point out about your PDR district that I want you to consider, because that's what you're doing tonight, is considering things that you want the developer to take back and address in a preliminary plan. Okay, first of all, the intent. What is the intent? It says, "It encourages a more imaginative and innovative design of land development." Okay? Imaginative is defined as having or showing creative or inventiveness, and innovative is defined as featuring new methods, advanced and original. Take that into account as you view this, because what they've done is taken the usual part of the property and slapped on 26 units. Tell me what is imaginative and innovative in that design. Okay? I'm not asking you, just consider it. Okay. Section A states, "These planned development regulations are not intended to allow excessive densities or develop of incompatible land uses either within the development or as the development relates to the general neighborhood." Already been stated, the density is greater than the surrounding neighborhood or the existing zoning. They're a unit over, but over is over. So, sorry, but it applies. If you just take the usable acreage on that site, because that's been said, topography is tough. They got a 50-foot drop-off. So, you're not gonna be able to grade that. Sorry, I'm an engineer. So I, I can't see that happening. That costs way too much money. So, you're gonna use what's usable. So if you, you say, yeah, you can put 24 units on there, but if you look at the, at the units on a usable property, you're actually, your, your density increases by close to 60%. Okay? Show me how that's compatible with that existing area, particularly to the east. Period, explanation point. By the way, this property is all surrounded, totally, by residential zoning. Not interested in the uses, it's residential zoning. The proposed development is out of character. What do you see? I just told you. It's single-family residential, platted out that way and done that way. If they, they want to be creative, tell me how you get that type of arrangement on this lot with some, how can, how can I say it? With, with some ingenuity. Okay? "No planned development shall be allowed, which would result in other detrimental impacts to the surrounding area, including but not limited to visual pollution." I'm not gonna dwell on individual pollution. Their idea of a architectural wonder is their idea. Okay? But, I've, again, I'd ask you to look at the surrounding neighborhood, particularly the area to the east of the wooded area there. That's a natural buffer, always has been, because of that, that ravine and that drop-off there. They've indicated it'll stay that way. We don't see up there anything to, to the west. The, you know, they put in that parking lot, we don't see it. You know, we don't see light from it. Even when the trees fall off the tree, that's so dense, we don't see it. Okay? As far as the American Legion use, it's called commercial, might be a commercial use. I think Mizradic indicated it's rather docile. Their bars open three to, three to nine. If they got 10 cars in a lot, that's a big night, unfortunately. If they got two shooting matches a year, a barbecue, tasty barbecue every third Saturday, and they got an occasional auction and outdoor pavilion usage. The busiest time it is, is when it's a polling place. There is, like I indicated, and has been indicated, there is commercial zoning over to the west. You know why that is? Because those properties touch Highway 47, which is a major thoroughfare through town. And as is noted, along those thoroughfares, you're gonna get commercial zoning. But it doesn't encroach any further over than the Legion. Period, explanation point. So we have been, the effects of that commercial zoning have been indicated. You gotta find that the proposed density does not exceed what is necessary and appropriate. Again, that's a question for you, for you all, to think about and answer. Is it necessary and appropriate? Monetary figures, whatever they paid for land, whatever it takes to develop it, can't be considered. Sorry. They need 26 units? Don't care. My favorite saying to developers was, "That's not my problem." The buffers zone, we already discussed that. And that's interesting, because if we're using the PDR regulations from, that were amended in April, they read as such. Where a PDR development proposes residential development along the perimeter of the site, which is higher in density than that of an adjacent dwelling district, there shall be a minimum of 30-foot wide buffer area, so that all higher-density residential buildings are effectively screened from the abutting lower-density property. Where we know it's higher density. Everything around there is our residential zoning. Period. There should be a 30-foot buffer zone all around that property, I contend. Now, it can be waived. Those requirements can be waived by the city council. Do you want to waive them? They're looking for a recommendation from you. But do you want to waive, waive that, waive those requirements? What they've shown in his plan for, for their dinky buffer zones aren't gonna do squat. I can bring in here five landscape architects and talk about how to, how to give you an appropriate buffer zone. I've dealt with this for 40 years. What's an appropriate buffer zone? You can't effectively screen what they're gonna do, 30-foot-tall buildings, in 10 to 15 feet, people. It can't be done. Sorry. The vegetation, some of the vegetation's gonna die. It can't be done. It's gotta be a bigger buffer zone. I can tell you, the smallest ones I've ever dealt with were 25.
I, I do believe the buffer zone was taken out of the PDR.
Well, it does have that. I just pulled up, so it, it does say, whenever it's to a lower density, it can be, it needs to be 30-foot unless waived by city council.
I just read it.
Yep. You're right, sorry.
So...
I had to pull it up.
All I'm saying is, you can't do it in what they have proposed. I need more, okay? Period. I would, I would say, look at that up there, and look at the house, just the houses to the due east, and how, where they sit in adjacent to Washington Avenue, this property, and then look at their plan and see where they're placing buildings. That's all you gotta look at and understand, that you're gonna see them if they don't put in an adequate buffer zone. Make it something good. I know, let's face it, I mean, that's a rather docile area, Washington Avenue, it's a cul-de-sac. We don't get a lot of traffic. But the, but you do have problems at Third and Washington and Fifth and Washington. And that all occurred back when the hospital rearranged their parking lot, and guess what? They funneled all the traffic out to, to Washington Avenue instead of on the Madison, which is where it went. So, it's a problem for turning movements is the biggest thing, you know? And you're gonna add more cars to this. So the city needs, and this is a general comment, the city needs to look at somehow improving site distance, because I can tell you, every one of us that live there, go out Fulton. It's mayhem trying to get out on Washington at certain times of the day. So, we gotta get that done. They talk about a nature trail, that, ooh, it's gonna connect to the riverfront trail. I'd like to see that permit from the Union Pacific Railroad before you guys approve anything of a walking trail. That's probably gonna be tough to get for just a walking trail, but maybe they can achieve What guarantees this development will occur as shown? I know we got a plan. If the architecture goes with it, then fine. If, if everything on that plan is gonna be adhered to, that's fine. If they gotta come back and amend it, that's fine. I just want to make sure that if this gets approved in whatever form, that there's a guarantee that it gets done. The market targets retirees. Well, I'm a retiree, unfortunately, I, I probably won't be living there, unfortunately. We talked about transition zoning. Amazingly, it came up earlier. Where's that here? This development? Somebody show me that transition from single-family residential to multifamily. Somebody show me that. It's not there. Mayor? Hate to put you on the stop, but, but, just, just a question for you to think about. Are your teachers and factory workers gonna be able to live in those?
Tech, no.
Into those? Eh, probably not. And with all due respect to the architect and those in downtown, Toto, we're not in downtown with this development. We're in good old Osora, and we are in a residential, single-family development area. Period, explanation point. Okay. I brought up some points. I'm a, I'm a realist, though. We've, we've, we've all discussed in our neighborhood, someday that property's gonna develop. And I will be honest with you, whether anybody in my neighborhood agrees with you or not, the river bluff is the prime location on that lot. Period. That's, that's there, folks. There ain't, there are too many of those views in Washington left. Okay? Those I could see being developed as townhomes. Overlooking the river, you know, just what, what you would envision, even greater than downtown. You know? But then away from there? Maybe a single-family residential development? Maybe you gotta go smaller lots? Maybe you gotta go to some sort of clustered development? That would be innovative and imaginative. Now, get the most bang for your bucks for it? Don't know. But I think you need to think about that. So, I just hope you take all of my comments and information into account as you consider your actions, because once they're done and this gets started, it, it would need to be completed, in whatever form it's gonna take. And I'm gonna tell you a story, since we're in the history lessons tonight, just real quick. When I was city engineer here, a developer came in from St. Louis, and he said, and he had bought up all the lots on the north side of Sixth Street between Roosevelt and Wilson. That was all vacant at one time. In fact, a whole block was vacant at one time, even up to Fifth Street. But anyway, he come in, and that was six single-family residential lots. So, he came in and talked to me, and he said, "I wanna, I wanna develop those." "Oh, great." You know? I said, "You know, those are kind of small lots, laid out in an old subdivision. You probably need to, you know, replat those and put them into, you know, three or four, so you can build halfway decent houses." "Oh, no, I'm gonna use them as they exist." "Huh? How?" "Well, I'm..." "Well, I'm gonna build what they're building in St. Louis. I'm gonna go up." "Are you gonna, oh, really?" Well, I said, "As long as you meet the setbacks, meet the height requirements," I said, "I gotta give you a building permit." So he built it. Did they come? No, it sat there. It sat there. Finally got somebody to buy it. Six, eight months later, it was on the market again. Finally, he sold the rest of the property, and you got typical, single-family, more ranch-style homes that fit the neighborhood. And that's what I want you to consider here, is how does this fit in to the neighborhood? Not, does it, is it fancy, is it glitzy as far as the architecture? How does it fit in to that neighborhood? Because it is a single-family residential neighborhood. And that character needs to be kept, especially along Washington Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Sorry I was so long.
Anyone else in the audience?
Good evening, I think I might be the last one from my neighborhood, but I am Danielle McAusse, and I live at eleven oh-four East First Street. And our property is kind of diagonal to the proposed development project. And this part of town is kind of different than the other part of town. Like, this little tiny pocket that is available is kind of like right in the middle of where the east side of town starts. And the east side of town is different from downtown. It has a different look. We all have ranch-style homes, story-and-a-half-type homes, to where it is more conducive to people that are retired, because they want everything on one level. That's why they, you have residents in our neighborhoods that have lived there for well over forty-plus years. So, and we value that. We value how it makes our residential area so unique, because you know your neighbors for a very long time. And there's not much turnover on that, on First Street, all the way along down to East First Parkway, that whole riverfront area. All of our homes, I'm a visual person, all of our homes look like this. If you want me, I will pass it down. I think most of you know what the east side of town looks like, but it looks different than the west side of town. And this is where it's kind of like, this proposal needs to be similar. This is completely different than what is in our neighborhood. The three stories, they're trying to market to retired people. All these, the plans that I saw, all of them, yeah, they might have the option to put an elevator in, all of them have steps to go up every single level. So I'd like to see what kind of retired people are gonna want, homes even, you know, that are gonna need steps to get from, you know, your first level out of your car into, you know, your main level. So it's one of those, I mean, all their living spaces and everything, where they sleep, they still have to go all, whole flight of stairs to get upstairs. So it's kind of like, and the people, who else would be these marketable, too? I mean, working families, so you're gonna have to have at least, you know, a set of, I don't know, it's just kind of like, the marketing of these seems a little bit, not, I don't know, just a little bit of false advertising, a little bit, 'cause I know that they can put an elevator in there, but let's put some elevators in there then. I mean, if you're gonna market it to, you know, retirees, market it to retirees. So, I mean, that's, that's my two cents, but, I mean, this is our entrance of our, how we get onto the forty-seven. I mean, if you look to the left of First Street, you see a beautiful line of houses and residential. You look to the east side, you see First Street, and then the buffer zone, and then the rest of the beautiful First Street continues. So it's kind of like, this is one little chunk in between, I don't know, a very iconic part of town, and I really think that this would definitely take away from, I don't know, our character. I mean, we just had the symposium, and so many people from different cities just came and said how wonderful our town is, and how unique it is. Let's keep it that way. Let's keep our character. Keep east side of the town more residential, instead of these multi-level, I mean, complexes that they're proposing. So, that's my two cents. Thank you for listening to me, and thank you for listening to my neighbors and taking our considerations, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, he's a good neighbor.
If you were a bad neighbor.
I'll keep it simple. Joe Steiferman, I, we live at the corner of First Street and Washington Avenue. So, Ron did a great job technically explaining, you know, the zoning issues and so forth, and I, you know, I'm not into that, but just from a simple viewpoint of living there thirty-four years, and what I've seen over the years was two houses, you know, to my left, which now we're talking about replacing two homes with twenty-six townhouses, and it just seems a little overdone, keeping in mind that the lady that, I didn't know, but she gave a nice presentation of the sewer going down through there. That ravine that runs through those trees is totally used, I mean, unusable property. So the three-and-a-half acres that, you know, they're talking about here is really, whatever, two-and-a-half acres maybe of usable property, so we're putting twenty-six townhouses in two-and-a-half acres. And so, you know, just, just wanna throw my two cents in there, but on your drawing up there, I see my, if you'll see that blue dot there on the side of, on the right side of Washington Avenue, that's my swimming pool. So you can see how close that is to the street, and it's not that close. Three of the, three of the townhouses that are proposed in that drawing are closer to the street than that swimming pool is. So you can just put that in perspective of three stories right off the, right off the street, and what that probably would look like, so that's, I just wanted to throw my two cents in.
You have a lot of swimming pools in your neighborhood.
I'm new to the neighborhood, I've only been there about two years now. My name's Dan Bushmire, eleven seventeen East First Street. I pretty much agree with everything I've heard here today, try to keep that neighborhood pretty much single-family. I'm looking at the contours there, that lots and everything, and they were talking about twenty-four houses could possibly be put there, it's just impossible. If you look at those contours got there, I was, I'm even questioning, I only got some of the buildings laid out there, if they even fit the contours like they got shown there. But, like I say, it's pretty much all just, right now, it's kinda bare bones is what's gonna be done there, but, like I say, I'd like to keep the neighborhood pretty much like it is, like everybody's been saying, so that's all I've got to say.
All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Joseph Emke, I live at eleven oh-five East Third Street. I actually, there one alley, I think you showed on there, I'm adjacent, like, my property ends up in that alley behind there. My biggest concern, and this is something that nobody on here can probably address, but originally when I bought that house, I've been there thirty-two years, one of the things is over by the American Legion, they had that helicopter pad. And one of the things is, I've always noticed, too, is the way the helicopters were supposed to come in, and what they usually do, you take the river, and they come up the river, and they'll go right over top of that property, 'cause there's no other residential things around there. 'Cause when those helicopters, they come on your house, man, that gets a little scary when you look up, and there's a helicopter right above it. I don't know what they're gonna do to address that situation, because, and, I don't know, that was probably an unwritten rule, or whatever, of how those helicopters came in. When they landed, they always followed the river, coming through that property there, and then landed over there, instead of going over one of the other areas, over the residential areas. That's just one thing I wanted to bring up to you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, please come on up.
Maybe we go back to the colored site plan. Thanks very much for everybody's comments, and, you know, you lived there thirty years, and here comes twenty-six units. It's ironic, though, as we work with the city and with Sal, I mean, we even sat here, and I read the PDR, of course, studied it, we talked about it, thirty-foot buffer to the existing lower use was never discussed. So first of all, we would never bring a project intentionally that didn't meet the code. So Ron's comments were extremely good, but I wanna clarify a few of the things that Ron We do think it's an innovative project, because it's a stepped project. It has the massing of a single-family home. It goes from ten feet to twenty feet to thirty feet. Yes, there's a three-story component, but that three-story component is only eighteen feet wide. So we're not talking about blocking views or light, we're talking about a pretty minimal amount of volume when it comes to the size of it. Unfortunately, many of the neighbors saw the previous plan where buildings, or this building here, was four feet from Washington originally. Now it's sixteen feet from Washington. In addition, it was, it was nice to hear the gentleman that just spoke before that, whose resident was here with his pool, there is some issues with this unit and his pool. But it basically reads like and lives like a single-family home. The details that we don't get to talk about here is, in this unit, where normally there was glass to a view on the river, on the river buildings, it's got a much higher sill. It's got a sill up at thirty-six inches, so no one can see in, and they can't see out, and they can look out, but that is an issue, and that's something that we should discuss. Regarding the thirty-foot buffer, it is not a single-family proposal. So part of the decision we have to make as a community, and as placemakers, as an architect myself, and someone willing to invest millions of bucks in this property in the community, is to decide whether we want to stay in the same density that we are. I think the fear is that we're gonna destroy the nature of our livelihood and our lifestyle, right? The idea of this project is to appeal not to rich people. The idea of this project is to appeal to somebody that has the same mindset as you, that appreciates nature, that appreciates the river, that loves the character of that neighborhood, that's gonna walk, hopefully, to downtown, whether they can or not. It is one of the last radii, it's one-point-six miles out of town. So, you know, you gotta be ready to walk, so maybe that's not for everybody. So the tree, the tree question over here on Madison, the idea is to keep as many of those trees as possible. If there's trees that are diseased, we're gonna probably take them out. We're gonna clear out the honeysuckle, so that the nature corridor can stay. The idea is to keep the ravine as it is. So, I mean, part of the buffer here, and, you know, Ron's comments were good, and there's no reason that we can't look at this a little bit more. Part of this road is, is this house here, this is a garage, so there's not a direct front door, there's not a direct living room window staring onto these properties. And there's not ten units adjacent to him. There's really, there may be these six, these four units, but these four units read as two single-family houses. So, you know, you look at it, we call it multifamily or PDR, but I look at this project as a cooperative, single-family type residential development. It is actually in the building code like a residential development, because they're not stacked. So, let's address a couple other, I just wanna, I just wanna answer any of the others. The sewer line issue, good question. Right now, the sewer line comes through straight across here. It's amazing, because of this huge drop-off, that it does come through there, 'cause it's gotta have a big, a big invert at that point. The intent that we've worked through with a local civil engineer here, Rick at BFA, who knows the property and has done many projects, successful projects in town, is to reroute the sewer in an accessible area, and grant the easements required to make it legal and right. So if you wanna switch to that page, there it is. So right now, the sewer goes here, and not only can we not build over it, we would never propose that, that's existing, the sewer would come over and back. Part of our discussions with water is that we agreed to do a water loop all the way through the site with a six-inch main, and bring it back down into the street, which the water, which the head of water that was in the original sketch plan meeting said would improve the water quality of all the water all the way down, because it's not a dead end anymore. So, these are all things that we are open to talk about, but wanna make clear that we are not here to just put as many units as we can put here. If this were a single-family project, we developed, we looked at an option for single-family, and you can put eighteen units on this, as single-family with thirty-foot-high height restrictions. So we could not come to this meeting, and we could just build eighteen thirty-foot-high buildings. So it is legal for us to do that. Instead, what we did was we did what the PDR is looking to do, and we tried to get innovative. We tried to look at how you stack and move the buildings, how you move them up and down on the site. And one comment was made that the only good view is right at the top of the site. That's right, right here, the elevation is five sixty MSL over the river, so you've got about a hundred feet, and it drops. So we're about three to four feet down here. Well, because of the design of the building, you get river views from this unit right here, from this bedroom that faces this direction, past these houses, because they're, these guys are all lower. What else? They're not all on one level, and they're not designed to appeal to a person looking for a ranch. They're a townhome, vertical, and that is just not for that market. And the market is not intended to be false advertising. The marketing or the idea, the market that we're looking to appeal to is, is young or dual professionals and retirees looking to downsize and not have that yard. What else? So regarding building styles, the building style, red brick could be a consideration. You know, in the sketch plan, what's required of us is just to bring an idea about what we're talking about. This is not a design. So the developer, unlike the last project we heard, the developer's gotta pay myself, civil engineers, he's gotta pay all the design professionals, including soils and all the rest of this, to do his due diligence, to even understand if this is a viable project. So he's got thousands of bucks invested. So for us to fully design the building and show you what it's gonna look like before this meeting would be pretty risky. So red brick is absolutely an option. There are many buildings in this region that are made of the buff clinker and the buff smooth brick, glazed terracotta in the buff color, but red could be a consideration. Although the buildings look different than what you're used to seeing in single-family zones, the buildings do resonate with many of the buildings that were residential in Washington at its creation. The idea is that if you look at the model and some of the images, you'll notice that the fenestration, the window openings are very tall and thin. This is very typical turn-of-the-century Washington architecture. So, the architecture itself is derived directly from what you see mostly downtown. So that point is taken, that it's not about the eastern, western, or the eastern, single-family residential. I agree with that, but it's not trying to be. It's trying to be the next-generation product that becomes something that is taken from and inspired by Washington, but not the same old thing. There was a comment about all the cars that are coming in on Washington. Well, just like the last project, you cannot guarantee who's gonna live here. There's no way we know. The project most likely will not have teenagers living here. The project most likely will not have large families living here. These are two-bedroom, two-bathroom homes that don't have yards, don't have a place structure, don't have an adjacent park. These are not designed for families. Maybe there should be some, we've talked about this, we went back and forth, but the idea, the person that's driving here is, that's driving down Washington, which is the only ingress, you cannot get, there's no way you can get a road that would work from Madison into the property. It's impossible, because of the height differential. We wish we could. And, you know, one of the discussions we had was, maybe we could approach American Legions and see if we could get an ingress here to the south. That would be- That would be great if we didn't bring everybody up through, through Washington, but really that's the only way to get in. And you're most likely going to have someone in their at-least 30s or over, who's not going to be racing down the street, probably going to be a married couple, because they're going to be more expensive than someone might afford if they were a single professional. So those are, those are all truisms. I don't think anybody's that wrong in their assumptions, but I think we need to think about who really would be coming here. It's not, it's, it's not a teenager coming home from high school. It's most likely somebody coming home from dinner that they went to downtown. What else? The questions of human burials and other things and artifacts like that would be a big concern to us and we'd love to know more. We did do quite a bit of due diligence and vetted the existing building on the property that it wasn't a historic resource. We assured before we moved forward with any development that it didn't have any significant events happening, that it wasn't listed in the Department of Interior. We did a ton of work making sure that it was not, and it is not. So to propose demolishing that really cool house is sad, and we looked at a way to incorporate it, but it just doesn't make sense with the age and quality of the house at this point. So I think that kind of covers it. Mostly, the idea is that it is transitional-type zoning. It's PDR. It's not necessar, and some people might call it multifamily because you have two buildings connecting, but it really is a single-family type model. It's just connected. I mean, these are one and two-story with narrow three stories. So we're not talking about building big three-story blocks, 50 feet wide by 30 foot deep. We're talking about 18-foot wide. So the idea, you know, you're talking about the same massing as in, as in single-family. I think, I'm sure there's a few I missed, but we're also open to any messages back through Sal. And I do, I do want to understand, I have not found the 30-foot buffer. That's pretty prohibitive. You know, one of the comments was, why doesn't the development follow the orthogonal grid of the rest of the neighborhood? It's because there is a huge drop in topography right here. So this is the edge of the hill. The hill goes around like this. And we worked with a civil engineer exhaustively here in town at BFA, down on Elm, to make sure that this was viable and it does make sense from a drainage, constructability, and topography standpoint. So, you know, if we were to turn the buildings orthagonally and follow the city grid, we would have less buildings, which makes the project unviable for the developer. So that's the balance. Do you want someone to come in and bring quality products into the, into the city? If you do, then there's going to be some compromises that we need to make on numbers. So, like Sal said, 26, right? 24 units could be built. And the study we did was about 18. We thought 18 would fit. So it's not necessarily denser per square footage, it's denser per area. So.
Any other questions by board members?
I'm okay with you moving forward, but I'm going to tell you, my biggest concern is that 10-foot buffer at the beginning of that. I mean, I know you get it up to 16 feet and you get it up to 25.
The 10-foot buffer?
Down there. Well, that's what I'm showing by building 12 down there.
Here, right there's 10-foot 10?
10-foot, yeah.
That's the side of the...
I mean, I'm just telling you, that's my concern. I'm going to be okay with moving this forward, but...
Can we go back to the color real quick? Because the whole point of this is not to sugarcoat anything. We want everybody in the neighborhood to be excited about what's happening. So that building is adjacent to the end of First. And what it has is it has a fireplace adjacent to a living room with a sliver window on the second floor, and then it has a building entrance and a brick wall. So this doesn't have views or really, you can't really see into the building at this point. The building's orientation is this direction into the side yard. So I would agree, this one is the worst-case scenario of the whole site.
That's just the one that concerns me.
It was tough.
I'm just being honest with you.
Making these happen with, this has to be 26 for fire, this has to be 24 for backup. And then once you get any deeper here, you can't build them because the topography is just too steep. So we're trying to be conservative with constructability. So this one doesn't affect anybody else because this is a garage and this is a street, and there's no fenestration from bedrooms looking out there. So it's, that one's not a big deal, except for its proximity.
I think that's what concerns me, is the proximity to Washington Avenue and to, what is that, First Street down there, Second Street?
But it's one-story.
Street. It's a one-story, all?
One-story, two-stories, three-stories. So it steps down to the street. So that's part of the design, is that you're trying to buffer that.
10 inches away from...
This one doesn't, though. This one's 30 feet tall, right here, and it's 16 or 17 feet from the street. So, you know, the, I think these are all compromises and we're more than happy to adjust, but I think we have to look at the bigger picture of who's going to live here. And, I mean, just imagine the demographic and how happy the people are that are going to be living here with the access. There was, there also, there, the idea of a river trail, of a, a nature trail connecting to the river trail was abandoned early on because of, that's a really good point. I think Ron brought that up, yeah. That's not a proposal now and we're not trying to do that.
So Steve, you said you would work with rendering the drawings, but you will not work with the density amount, then?
Well, I mean, we'll work with anything. I think we're not up here saying it's this way or no way. This is the whole point of a public hearing. I think, Florin, this will be the first development he's done in Washington, and, you know, he and I, I'm in an age, I'm 55, I'm not going to do projects that don't create a good legacy and a good quality product for me. I just don't take them anymore.
I like a lot of your ideas and concepts, but I just, it looks a little too tight to me.
Well, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, the one thing, just like Mike was, was saying, even on that, that first unit, instead of maybe just having a duplex, just have it as, you know, a two-step and then, you know, moving the thing back.
A single, a single unit?
A single unit instead of a duplex. You're dropping down just one person out of 26, and then you're gaining more space that everybody's really concerned about is, is my thought, is all.
Not a bad idea.
Yeah, I, I thought the same thing. I just, there's got to be something that, without you losing two more units to do at your...
We're only a step two out of a bunch and...
My thought is kind of similar to, similar but a little different. What about a, somewhat of a stylistic buffer? In terms of, you know, that unit that you're talking about that's by, right by Washington Avenue, and then kind of the outlier unit the other way? What, because it seems like there's some concern from the neighbors as far as, is the style compatible with the style of the neighborhood? Not that, I mean, I, I think it's really neat and I think it's innovative and I think it matches the intention. But since those are kind of not really part of your views necessarily, or your concept, do they have to be exactly the same as everything else you're building? Or could those be a little more kind of, you know, of a, just a, maybe a little similar character to what some of the other ones have?
It actually is. It actually is similar style to the neighborhood, except for the buff brick. So what is not fair to the neighborhood constituency and people that aren't involved in the design is that we are at a very initial stage. So the developer has to balance how much money he's spending on me and civil engineers and others to get to the point where we can get an approval, right?
Sure.
So, and we also have to, the project has to pencil, it has to be viable. He's going to spend all this money, and at the end, if it doesn't pencil, then it's a huge waste of money and a, and a loss for the city. So as we get further on, there will be more information to see. I know that doesn't help a lot of people now, but that facade on that side is basically like any brick. If it were red, we wouldn't even be having this discussion because it looks like every other single-family from here to the St. Louis City Line. So, you know, it does have a pitched roof, it's just rather low. It's not an eight to 12, and it's, it's that way on purpose to keep the buildings low so we don't block neighbors' views.
Sure.
It's also so that you don't see them from the 47. If you're coming across a bridge with the existing trees that are there, you will barely see, you'll see these two units for sure, but you probably won't see everything over here on the rest of the property because this buffer is going to stay where it is.
Okay. But if I heard you, Kelly, you're open to a red brick idea?
Absolutely. I mean, we're open to discussing that. The idea of the red brick is that it's part of a period vernacular, but it's more modern. It's intentionally supposed to be more modern, to appeal to a slightly different demographic that lives in Washington than, than now, right? And that's, that can be scary, but it also is going to bring some great people, right? Some professionals that may never thought that Washington was the place they'd live and they've been in Central West End their whole life, right? So it could be brick. It could be just as beautiful brick, red brick, it's a possibility.
It's all up to that guy.
Well, I think you have some information that you heard tonight to take back.
Great. I know there's one more, there's some more, one more comment here. Thank you guys so much.
Stephen, in Florin, before you go, you guys have done a dynamite job. I really, really like the design. Quite frankly, though, this pushes the envelope for our neighborhood and for our town. And are we ready for something like this, you guys? And I'm not talking, you know, a year or two and when it's complete, and, and the day it's complete, you're going to be full, period. We all know that. But do we want the east side of town, as those houses get old and are sold to developers? Is that what we want? That's what we need to look at. Not this one in particular, you know, but besides that, but long-term. Is this what we want? And how that relates to us as a code-governed body, I don't know. You guys have been doing this a long time, so you see where I'm coming from, you guys.
I would think the other thing that we want to see in the, in your HOA regulations is going to be the restriction on that these are not Airbnbs, that these are residential units, whether it be, I know just, again, by way of example, like Carriage Court has a restriction that leases have to be a minimum of a six-month lease if somebody's going to lease it out. You know, some kind of, something like that to where, because I could see this being, becoming very attractive for Airbnb investors, but that's not really necessarily the character of the surrounding neighborhood.
Totally understand that, absolutely. That's not the intent of the project. The intent of the project is owner, occupied, high-quality, cared-for, revered, right? I mean, the idea would be, and it's hard to, because the intent here is to be completely respectful and of the neighborhood, but to push the boundaries a little bit, it's, it's hard to balance both. The idea would be after this project is done, that, that Florin and his, and his group is respected and, you know, asked to come back to the table and do more of these, right? That it's about, it's a project about Washington. It's not just a, a turn-and-burn project. He's here for the long haul and so are we, so, you know.
Yep. I think with more design that we can see visually would help.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean Mayall, 23 Town and Country Drive. And Tom, I hate to do this because I see the clock, I'll be really fast, I promise. This night's going on forever.
That'd be a first.
I know, that would be a first, right, Tom? Sal, if you could go back to the, the overhead. Again, my name is Sean Mayall. I currently own that property. And maybe I probably should have come up here a little bit earlier. A couple of comments that I wanted to address the audience and the neighbors is, I know they even said it, that this day has been a long time coming and they've waited for this day. Well, there's a reason. I've owned that property for probably 10 years, and I've had multiple offers, multiple people coming to me with ideas on what to put on that property, and it just wasn't fitting, it wasn't right. It wasn't going to be the project that needed to go there. So I have sacrificed selling that property many times over the years. There's been a for-sale sign on that property the entire time that I've owned it. You know, none of the neighbors or anybody's ever approached me on it, but I have been overly selective. And when I sat down with Florin and his team, the first thing that I said before we wrote a contract was this has to be the right project, the right timing, and it needs to be a great project. It needs to be done properly, it needs to be built right, we need to try to keep everybody happy. And that was my first thing we said before I ever agreed to a contract, because my name, a lot like what Kurt had said, I, there's a good chance that I'll be working with Florin on this project, doing some of the building. And my name's on that property, been on that property for a lot of years, and I want to make sure that whatever's built on that property works out well, it fits with our community. And I'm, I'm going to probably agree to disagree with you, Mayor, that we're pushing the envelope. There's no, there's nothing here on this, on this product, this project that's pushing the envelope compared to what's going on in the city of Washington. One thing I am, one thing I am extremely excited about, board and, and people in the room, is in Washington, Missouri, there's about a handful of builders and developers, that's all that's left from '08. And I can tell you that there's about 75% of them in the room right now. And we go out on the line every day and risk our livelihood, our finances, on making projects like this happen and making them look good. And what I'm really excited about is this developer is from out of town that's coming in. I welcomed him, we've sat down, we've had meetings, and he's willing to invest a lot of time and effort and money in our community and make things look great. Him and I had that discussion right out the gate. That was the first thing we even talked about before we talked about price and, and where we were headed. And, and I'm excited that our community has another potential developer that will come in and develop a piece of property and work on, work, work on, hopefully, on another, another property. And I, what I can assure this audience, I don't need to assure the board, is that this, this board, this council, this, this planning zoning, along with Sal and the staff, have your back. And the number-one reason for the planned unit development is to present all that stuff up front. It's going to be spelled out, and the developer definitely is going to want to work with the neighbors, to a degree, to a degree, and, and make this project right. There are going to be no water issues, there'll be no sewer issues, everything will be, you know, as it may. So again, I'm just, I'm excited about the development. I'm excited about what it brings to Washington. Our Washington is growing and it's, some people like growth, some people don't. But I'm, I'm excited to have a new developer come in and work with us, handful, because we're it, guys. This is it. There's a handful left since '08, and it's a struggle. Every day, we fight, we fight a lot of battles, but we go out and we sign our name on millions and millions of dollars of loans, and we try to help develop and make this town what it is, and we try to make different types of housing. And this is really no, no different than a lot of things that's down on the riverfront and other parts of our town. So there's definitely not pushing the envelope. It's an exciting project. We have to work with the neighbors, but we want to work together as a team. And I think what they've presented is a good start tonight, and I want to assure this crowd that the right thing will be done and, and everybody, you know, everybody does have a lot at stake here. So, anyway, if anybody has any questions for me, I'd be available afterwards. I know I'm going to get going here because it's late, but I've waited a long time for this and made sure it was the right development and the right developer because we have a lot at stake here. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Got to make it fast.
Lights go off at 11.
Yep. I'll go as fast as the previous people. I'm kidding. Just got to rebut the rebuttal, okay? First of all, PDR is very subjective for you all. You know, it's going to be governed by this plan, so think very carefully.
Hey, Ron, could you speak into the microphone a little bit?
Oh, I'm sorry. Think very carefully and review this very intently.
We're old and deaf.
I'm sorry, what?
We're old and...
Oh, sorry. So am I.
Barely mobile.
Can't walk, we can't even go in there.
Says the architecture is innovative. Well, that's very nice, but show me anywhere in your code where you deal with architecture as, as a subject of zoning. It's not in there. I can already tell you that. Period, explanation point. Talk about building being 16 feet back, still not adequate. Sorry, not going to happen. You're not going to put an adequate buffer zone in 16 feet. Sorry. I'm, I'll bring landscape architects in here and tell you that, okay? If this development goes in, we won't have to worry about, about the, you know, buffer, natural buffer there on, on the west side because it'll be blocked by buildings, okay? So that's not a concern if this goes in. That'll be blocked. Talk about, well, this isn't really multifamily. Units are units. It's multifamily. Sorry. Can't help that. That's the way it was put in. If they can put 16 single-family units in there and meet the code, hey, have a great time. No skin off my nose. That's what it's owned. Have fun. Talked about how it meets the 19th century. Last time I looked, we're not in the 19th century. Talked about who's going to live there. Can't guarantee who's going to live there. Sorry. They'll sell whoever wants to buy them. They'll sell whoever wants to buy them. Talked, talked about people looking out of, of the, the units. Buffer zone isn't for them not to see out, it's for the adjoining property or not to see in, or see the buildings. Don't care whether they can see out or not. They want to argue this similar to the neighborhood. I think that's been addressed, folks. It's not similar to neighborhood. They're talking about that setback off of Washington. Yeah, if that was a standard building, you know, single-family unit, guess what? They'd have a 30-foot setback, because that's what's required in that district. And I was amazed, because people like to talk, we've heard it from the developer, we've heard it from Mr. Mayall, who owns the property, heard it five times, I counted. Oh, the cost, the cost, the cost, the cost, the cost, oh my God, the cost. Show me anywhere in your code where cost is a factor. That is not your concern. It is not our concern. That's between the owner of the property and the guy who wants to develop it. Period, explanation point. I had that saying ingrained in my mind when I had developers come in and talk to me. I don't care what it costs. That's your problem.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Anyone on the board? We have to have a motion on it, Sal, for the information?
Yeah. Motion to, to move forward to the next step and to let them submit the preliminary plan at a future meeting.
Still moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you very much. Moving on. Item number six, file number 221002, 309 High Street, special use permit, short-term rental.
All right. If you could, if you could go outside, please, if you could go outside, you can talk in the hallway. That'd be great. I know some of us can't make it past midnight, for sure.
Wait, that's my bedtime.
Okay.
All right. This is a request for a special use permit for short-term lodging at 309 High Street. The property is zoned R2 overlay, right on the border of the R2 overlay district, so just to the west is R1B, single-family, but in this area, there is R2, so it does allow single-family and two-family. You can see there is short-term lodging, and the vicinity, just Catty Corner, and then also down off Horn Street, about two and a half blocks away. So, again, these uses are primarily residential in nature and have not, not posed a detriment to the residential uses of the, of the neighborhood, and it does have access via alley in the back, so we do recommend approval.
Questions by board members, comments?
Sal, I've got a question about, we, every month, we have multiples of these. And in driving by, looking at these two this, this time, it seemed like the property isn't maybe in the best of shape. And I guess my concern is, is we, if we approve this, there's, once it's approved, there's really nothing that can disapprove it or change it away from that. Is that correct? That once it, once it gets, gets approved as a VRBO, it can be used that for the entire time the house is occupied? And then how are we tracking the inspections and what goes on and everything else?
Well, they get inspection. VRBOs have, Airbnb's have to get inspection every year.
I, I understand that. So, if it goes and reverts back to where it isn't an Airbnb anymore, when do we, do we ever get notified of that, or does that, how, how is that being administered, I guess?
Well, to be honest, that's why we hired that.
So, did we?
That Granicus company. Yeah, we just hired it about a month ago to do all that maintenance for us.
Well, and I think, isn't the, isn't H3 looking at this for long-term plan?
Long-term, yeah.
Because something that, I mean, something that I noticed, I mean, I don't know.
That should show up in the mailing, too.
I don't mean to talk over anybody, I'm sorry.
Oh.
No, I was trying to figure out, I mean, I'm just looking at, and again, I mean, I wish Mark was here, Mark P. Because I see, I mean, the applicant is not a local person either. And I, I mean, that's something that I know is of concern, is there really a vested interest in the community and in supervising this property? I, I mean, that's just, that's a concern that I.
Right, which is why we wanted to include that in our long-range comp plan.
Yes.
But that doesn't necessarily have, meet any of our current stipulations.
I understand.
Right, I understand that.
Come on up.
The applicant's here.
Hi. I'm Emily Solder. I'm the applicant. This is the house we just bought for this. I'm from Washington. This is my hometown, and the reason we, we just sold a place in Branson so that we could go here, because I invested and fully want to be in Washington. And part of the reason we also bought it was because, like, on Christmas and stuff, my husband and I have nowhere to go, because all of our family's here, and Washington is super expensive, and we can't live here yet. So, us as young family, we have nowhere to live. So, I bought this so we can come here for holidays, hustle word, come on holidays, and then in the meantime, we can rent it out and make money for it, because that's the only way we can be near our family during the holidays. So, that is why we bought this. And I do have very vested interest in Washington.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. That helps.
That wouldn't be apparent from your application, but, so, thank you. That's why we always want the applicant to be here, so you can talk to us.
Yes. The only reason we don't live in Washington is because we cannot yet afford to live in Washington.
We're working on that.
Yep. Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Guys, have any other questions?
Yeah, any other questions?
Well, and I guess here's my question. I mean, are you, are you going to be managing this, or is some, a local person going to be managing it? And, you know, if there are problems, if the neighbors have concerns, you know, how do they contact you, and what is your plan to address those concerns? Let's assume that, you know, you have a, a bad person that comes in that's going to behave badly and cause trouble in the neighborhood. How do you, as a business owner, intend to manage that with not being nearby?
Yes. Like I said, we have homes down in Branson as well that we manage from afar. I manage them personally, and in Washington, it's even better, because I have family who live two minutes down the road that are already helping out and coming and helping do things. And I've also spoken to most of our neighbors around, and gotten phone numbers from all of them, and have spoken with them, and they're all really okay with it.
Okay. Very good.
Thanks.
Good.
It's really nice to see there's off-street parking with the alley.
Mm-hmm.
Because High Streets, you know, it's nice that you've got that.
Yeah, it's great for the stairs, too.
Right on that turn, too.
Right. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
For sure.
You had no idea what you were getting into, didn't you?
Anybody else would like to speak on this? Vic, I know you're just chomping at the bit. I'll entertain a motion if there's no further discussion.
I'll move this forward.
I'll second it.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Moving on, item number seven, file number 221004, 527 Elm Street, special use permit, short-term rental. Sal?
All right. Again, another request for short-term rental. This one at 527 Elm Street. You can see here, it's just south of the downtown district, and on zoning-wise, it's actually right across the street from the downtown district, so we had, when we amended our downtown zoning or gave a determination, Elm Street was kind of the, the western barrier in this location. So, you can see that, that's why this one needs to get a special use permit. In the vicinity, you do have three within a block and a half along Fifth Street. Those, however, did not need to get approval, because they were in the C2 district, so they didn't have to go through this process. However, with its vicinity to downtown, it's walkable to downtown.
And we did that one on Sixth Street that's shown on there.
Oh, you're right.
The circle in the back, the back's up to the old two.
Correct.
Hey, there should be that one there. On there, too. That's really close.
So, there is one right here. We just did a, yeah, laser pointer. But yes, where that Circle Drive is. And, but again, residential in nature, we don't have any proof of detriment to the surrounding properties, nor have we gotten complaints from any of the ones in the area that have been approved, at least nothing that's been forwarded to our office. So, we recommend approval of this as well.
Questions or comments by board?
The only concern I've got, and it's probably still not part of the planning zoning thing, was the front porch.
Hi. We're the owners of the property.
Could you introduce yourself?
Yes.
And you can't talk or say anything if you haven't been here since the first part of the meeting. You can't just show up.
I apologize for my appearance. I just got done driving 12 hours from Texas.
I'm just kidding.
Literally like nine to 12 hours.
So, my name is, so my name is Gretchen Burton, and this is my husband, Rob Burton. And we are residents here in Washington. As he described, he would just, actually came home from Korea. So, he was deployed, and, so he was driving back from Texas, so, so we're happy to see him. So, you had a question on the front porch of the property?
I had a question. I mean, you've got that door.
Uh-huh.
And there's.
No railing.
Railings or anything?
Yes. That is correct. So, we are putting a railing. That's the simple answer to that question. And the other.
Really, it's, it's not part of ours. It's more part of the inspection, all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
It was just a point that was a safety issue that I saw right away from.
So, it's, it's done with a skeleton key now, which.
I know, that still doesn't.
Oh, no, I know. I'm just saying, like, you know, it's not like an inside lock. It, it's not a permanent solution, but temporary solution. We actually purchased it. We love Washington, and we love the downtown charm of Washington. Rob has never had a home anywhere, so you wouldn't, so he's always been a military brat, and, you want me to keep talking?
She's doing great.
He was a military brat, and he has served for 19 years, so he's never had anywhere to call home. I'm from Missouri, lived here all my life. I'm from Bell, Missouri, and moved to Washington. Love the area. My kids go to school in Labadee, and then our other two don't currently. But Rob came here for the first time, and he was excited that I has, asked him to call it home. So, he proposed, and, you know, we got married, and, and we live downtown in the townhouses, but we saw an opportunity to have, you know, share our community with other people, because we love adventures and going to Airbnbs and traveling to see things and taking our kids to see places. So, we decided, you know, we wanted something for him to do once he retires. He's retiring from the Army in a year, so he needs something that, you know, allows him to be at home as a dad and a husband for a little bit, so, before jumping into, you know, another career field, so.
So, this one doesn't have off-street parking, correct?
It does. It actually does. It has, it has an off-street parking.
That driveway to nowhere, is that what you're considering the?
Yes.
Okay. I was going to ask about the driveway, because it doesn't go anywhere, but how many, how many people do you think, I mean, how many bedrooms does the house have?
So, the house, actually, if you are counting how many people could sleep in that house, it's like an army. But you have to remember, there's only one bathroom. So, so, I mean, if you were, like, you know.
10 women and one guy.
You know what I'm, maybe 10 men and one, one female, you know? So, it is four-bedroom in the house, and, you know, we're not a heads-in-beds type, you know, Airbnb, because we're local, and we want it to be nice, and we want it, it's ours, and we don't want it to get damaged. You know, we, we take that sort of approach to it, you know? This is a first for us. We've done tons of research. We're actually going to move into it while we fix it up, because there's just a lot of things that you don't get return on your investment, like trim, or like window sills being chipped, or, you know, things like that. And I don't know if anyone knows anything about this home, but every single thing in that home almost is original. The floors are original, the roof is original, the windows are original and work. The door that you were talking about is original, and that's what excites us, but you can't charge money because you restained the window sills. You know, people don't care about that. So, we're actually moving into it to kind of fix up as we go, and then Airbnb it, so. A little bit of a change of plan from, from what we originally thought, so.
Any other questions, comments?
So, let me get this straight. You flew nonstop from Seoul to Dallas, drove here, and this is your first day back?
So, sir, I landed in Dallas on Friday?
Yeah.
Friday. And she was there to pick me up at the airport.
Okay.
And she left yesterday to come up here, so the kids can make it to school on time.
I got you.
And I stayed down there the other day.
And I could make it to the meeting on time?
That is.
So, that would be above and beyond.
I wasn't expecting to make it on time.
Yeah, yeah.
Clearly, I could have just rode back with him. Still made our, still made our bullet item.
If I can indulge, indulge you guys for a minute. Folks, you're the kind of folks we want here in town, okay? Period. So, when you retire, Rob, or when you feel the urge, Gretchen, please volunteer and get involved in the community.
And thank you for your service.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service, but FYI, don't ever tell the board they can't physically walk anywhere when you're wanting something done.
Yes.
I did, I walked all day long. I may look like I'm mad, but I.
I said, not judging from y'all. I just said, my neighbors.
Well, you did mention that you thought everyone on the board was a little too old to be walking around downtown. I think you might have been nervous, and, but probably offending everybody on the board is not a good way to get your item approved.
Didn't mean to do that.
Yeah.
All right.
I'll move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good luck.
Moving on, item number eight, file number 221006, the Creek of Coke Farm preliminary plat. Vic, wake up. We're ready. Sal?
Okay. I don't know where my laser pointer went, I left it up there. I believe it was last April, we approved, or you all approved, a preliminary plat for the property just west of here, which is the Meadows at Coke Farm. Now, this is the next phase of this, or a different plat, but it's connected to it, it's the Creek of Coke Farm. So, obviously, it's connected still to Beaker Road. So, this is the actual plat for this phase. It does show Beaker, or Rabbit Trail connecting down to Beaker. It does have this in a different color here.
It does have this in a different color here. This is actually part of the development agreement that the city, um, is going to be building this, this portion of this. And it, uh, does meet the requirements that we had, um, 50-foot a rideaway, um, 35-foot street. They do not have any driveways on this, so if you see it with the way, that was the stipulation, if we were going to build it, they couldn't have driveways directly off of it. And so obviously, this plat meets that with all of these driveways and an eyebrow. So these driveways do not come right off of there. It is a 32-lot subdivision. Um, almost all of them are on, uh, off of the streets of Rabbit Trail, except because the, of the grouping that was available here, there's three lots that were added. So I'm gonna switch over, this is what was approved as the final plat for the first phase. You can see, there's a little gap here.
Right.
And so that now, you can see, there's the three lots they added. And the common ground, shift to the common ground down here, and then, uh, completed the development here. So, uh, it meets all the requirements. It's got the appropriate easements. Uh, it's got, it meets the minimum lot size of R1D. Um, almost, most of them are over the 7500. There's a few of them that get a little bit smaller there. Um, the only, um, street name change, and we did talk to, um, uh, emergency services, and it's not a name change. It's just that, um, Peyton's Place Avenue, uh, avenues are reserved for through streets. And so we just recommended that just be Peyton's Place.
That's why Ron had it.
At that, at that way. And then the, the circle and way, those could be courts and ways and cul-de-sacs, so. We recommend approval of this. You'll see there's no stormwater on here. With their dismissal, they were overcompensated with stormwater on the overlook, and that's how they submitted that here. When they come in with construction drawings, they'll have to submit the calculations proving that. And if it, for some reason, requires the change of the plat, it'll be back in front of you. Uh, but they could always do stormwater, cause they own. I mean, stormwater could also be done down here too. So when they actually, construction drawings are submitted, they'll have to s- show that to the city engineering. But we recommend approval of this plat and excited to get that connection done.
Questions, comments by board of Sal?
The only question I have is, where do they get the street names from sometimes? Two o'clock in the morning, some of these are like, where is that? Or what was that? You know, so anyway.
You won't forget Peyton Place.
That, that's an easy one.
That's right.
Elders Lee, Elders Lie Way?
Well, they know Crew is one of the grandsons.
Anyway.
Anyway.
I just had to say.
Getting back to the subject at hand.
You know, we're getting slap happy.
Yeah, we are.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Signing the C, uh, connection.
Yes.
That's gonna be great.
Vic, thanks to you.
You know, where are you going?
We're not done.
Home. We got the.
Noise.
Noise ordinance one. Okay. So the last thing on the agenda tonight, we, um, in 2017, the noise ordinance section was added into our zoning code. For decades, it's always just been a, um, in the nuisance code where the police have their, um, opinion if something is deserving of being a nuisance violation. In 2017, when we added all this, there is performance standards on all zoning districts that require them to have, all dwelling districts and all business districts have these very complicated octave band sound level decibels. And to be quite honest, we never have enforced this. We've never used this section since 2017. We don't even have the equipment to enforce it. Uh, we've since got a complaint, um, about a business in town and we realized we couldn't even enforce this without the equipment. The equipment is like $5,000 and is, is obviously way too complicated for, you know, you have to be trained in it. Whenever, we looked up at a lot of other communities, uh, they just have a standard decimal reader and you have a receiving district versus a, uh, where the actual noise complaint is coming from. So we are just proposing to simplify this, take that section out of having an octave band from different cycles per second and different, and, and just say, here's the receiving zoning category. So if the complaint is coming from this zoning district, um, the, they can call, the police will go with a much simpler piece of equipment and they'll be able to read the sound level. Um, and it, even if the, the noise is coming from commercial or industrial, if the receiving zoning is residential, this is the category. So, um, we didn't just throw these numbers out the wall. We did actually do a little bit of homework. Uh, we looked at some of their communities. A lot of these numbers match, like what Wentzville, uh, Warrenton. We kinda went down the 70 corridor and zonings and, and looked at it. This matched it. We did go a little bit higher in our C1, C2, C3, because if you look at, we just pulled this. I think John Nell just actually found this from like a, a Yale study. A freight train from 100 feet away is 80 decibels. So we thought that was a realistic number to choose for downtown, because if someone is choosing to live where freight trains are passing all the time.
Kick back, that one back, homework, would you? Just so we can get a.
So, yeah, this is kind of the, the threshold, the typical sound levels, so.
So, Sal, just in looking at this, and I don't, I, I mean, honestly, I would probably rather do this when Mark Piantek is here, um, since a lot of the enforcement's gonna fall to him and, I mean, I, but, but I, I was just curious as far as the residential, you know, the PDR and the R3 being higher. I, I don't, not sure why they would be treated differently than the other residential districts.
Well, typically, cause they're just a little bit higher density and they're closer to, since, because we tried to transition them closer to commercial, higher intensity uses. We wanted to give the higher intensity uses a little bit more of a buffer, because we put typically multifamily, PDR closer to commercial, that they didn't have to follow the commercial, cause really, the onus is on the commercial to do it. This gives the commercial the capability of going up to 70 instead of 65.
Okay, so, so this is, these sounds are, you said that's the receiving. So like, if, if I'm in R3 and I'm mad about noise, I can get mad at a 70, but not at a 65? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Or is, but it's not, but it's, it doesn't hinge on where it comes from?
It does.
Okay, so, so if I'm in R3.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
If the noise.
It does not hinge on where it comes from. It hinges on who's complaining.
So the, so it's the complaining person not, okay. So if I am like in R1A, but I live in one of the places that's next to a commercial, then I can complain at 65? I, it's not the 80 that I complain at?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, I don't, I don't know.
And the facility that the complaints come from, they bought their own, they bought one now.
Yeah.
If you've got other facilities, I guess the biggest thing that we wanted to make sure, since I waited all night for this thing.
I knew you couldn't resist.
I didn't complain. I came for the other stuff.
You're, you're gonna speak on this issue, Darren?
I thought about, you know, leaving it for a long time.
We'll drag it another half an hour then.
No, it's not. But we did try to make this as simple as possible. I think the biggest key that you're gonna have is, like I said, we have a lot of festivals. And you see number three, it just talks about the fact of this is not applied for, for anything that's established as a festival district. You know, so we don't want situations where the police department has to enforce, uh, you know, somebody, what's the street that goes down by, uh, the?
The Lashes?
The old, uh, no, but the old, uh, tennis courts there by the fair or something.
Oh, thank you.
I don't know what that street's called. I can't remember what that street is. It's like three homes down there.
North Park Drive.
Somebody bought, you know, a house on there and then all of a sudden, the fair comes along and they want us to enforce this. I mean, that's.
No, no.
Right.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but if you don't have this stuff in place about festival districts, you're gonna.
Right.
We throw a lot of parties, folks.
Yes, we do.
And so the idea is, you don't wanna sit there and have them running out there every single time that they've got it, but. Uh, we did look at this. I, I think this is gonna be one of those things where we just, if we have to tweak these numbers at a later date, we'll find out after we, you know, after we pass it.
We've gotten one complaint that actually asked us to use it in five years, so I think it's right. If we decide, if the police get there and says, hey, this, this is really unrealistic for them to, to get, and then, then we can tweak it if we need to.
Right. We've sat down with them too, because this, they're gonna be the ones that are gonna have to enforce.
Okay, so the police have been over this?
The police have been over this. Mark has been over this, et cetera. This gets down to about as simple as a couple hundred dollars for a device to go out and, and for the police department to go out there and stand based on a complaint.
Mark, actually, I copied this from an, from an email that I got from Mark.
Okay.
Okay, the only question I've got then actually has to do with the compression release engine braking stuff on trucks and things like that. How does?
Someone's driving by, it's really not enforceable. Now, if a car is getting repeated complaints and the police can find that car and realize it, there is still the nuisance ordinance in place.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, it's like, you know, the.
This does not cover Jake brakes situation, stuff like that, if that's what you're referring to on the highway.
And Chuck, we did put those signs up.
Yeah.
How many years ago, that the police will have some backing, you know, especially for Quail Run. Harley-Davidson's come down through there, the Jake break down through there, and that's why we put those signs up.
I have not.
I don't go that way.
We have not. I don't know about council.
So the police have something they can, hey.
Right, there is, there is.
I don't know that the council's received any complaints about that as much, since we've had that in place.
But I didn't want this to sit there and, and now.
Hit it.
Now you're down below and it's in now.
Right. Do we have the device and is it calibrated?
Was when they put in the four lane.
Yeah.
That was.
Is it something anybody can carry on their phone?
So, the only other question I had was the timeframe. And the only reason I bring this up is the new self-storage that we approved up on Highway 47, they mulched every one of those trees up there, starting at 6:15 in the morning. And in my subdivision, on Michelle, which is the one farthest to the west, woke me up every morning with the, I mean, yeah, we had the windows open this fall quite a bit, but it was, I called communications, cause I thought it was loud where I was at.
What, what time of year were they doing it though?
Just recently, September.
Well, there is, there is a time.
Yeah.
There is. It's six o'clock.
It depends on what time of the year. You might've still been in the summer hours where they do start at six.
Because it's the same thing with.
And that's what, just so you know, those hours coincide with, we look back at that section of the ordinance.
Our construction code.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so this is what the, so construction is that hour.
Right. It's the same thing, cause all the guys.
It was a nuisance.
And Vic come out.
Okay.
Darren, do we have the device and is it, uh, calibrated?
It's, we have the device. They, it took, it, they said something like three weeks to get calibrated and they ordered it a while ago, so.
By the time we get the ordinance passed, we'll have it.
Cool.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to move, we approve this.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Maybe we can set it up on Fifth Street and when cars go by, the police can pull them over and give them tickets for noise. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Any dissenters?
I think it's.